All right. Good evening, Azusa community, students, parents and staff. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting study session for today. For item one point one, I would like to call the meeting to order on Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Now, moving on to item one point two roll call. Do we have Board Vice President Benavides?
Here.
Board Member Clerk Rodriguez Pena is absent for today. We have Board Member Greer.
Here.
Board Member Ramos.
Here.
And I am present today. So there's four of us and one absent. We're moving on to item one point three approval of the agenda. Can I please get a first motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a first motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we get, can we get a second motion?
Second.
We have a second by Board Member Greer. Since my computer decided to restart right now, and it's going to take a bit, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call of roll, roll call of hands. Board Member Greer.
Yes.
Board Member Benavides.
Yes.
Board Member Ramos.
Yes.
And I myself, yes, it passes four to one absent. Great. The following are guidelines for a public comment. Item two point one on the agenda. If you wish to participate in public comment, please make note of the following. The Board of Education encourages public input. Board members are not permitted to respond to any public comments. A member of the staff will contact you if information is needed. Individuals participating in public comment must adhere to the following guidelines. Speaker cards must be turned in to the Board Secretary, Ms. Hope, or raise their hand while in Zoom attendance by seven ten P M. And actually, today is a little different because we're starting at five thirty, so it will be, I believe, five forty P M, or ten minutes after the meeting has started. No speaker may yield their time to another individual speaker. Speakers must be present when their name is called in order to be heard and move up to the stand. Maximum speaking time is three minutes. And we want to thank you for your cooperation and participation during public comment. Now, moving on to item one point four, the Pledge of Allegiance. Will Georgina Taylor, Early Childhood Education Program Supervisor, please come to the podium?
Good evening, Board President Arianez, Board Members, Cabinet and Community. My name is Georgiana Taylor. I am the Childhood Education Program Supervisor here at A U S D. I would like to take a moment to highlight the exceptional start our youngest learners are experiencing here in the district. We are proud of the full scope of our preschool program. Conveniently located across all the elementary school sites, we offer a variety of programs, including both part day and full day options with all curriculum and instructions specifically designed to align with our district's educational framework and meet the unique developmental needs of every child. We know that learning doesn't stop when the school day ends, and that's why we are investing heavily in supporting learning at home. I am thrilled to announce a significant initiative made possible by a special state funding source. We will be sending an exciting package of Lakeshore Educational Learning Materials valued at approximately eight hundred dollars to the homes of all of our C S P P program families just before Christmas. This comprehensive package includes physical materials and a year-long web-based program to support hands-on learning in a fun and meaningful way throughout the year. And finally, to foster a lifelong love of literacy, every single Friday, our preschool students receive a brand-new book or book set to take home. By the time they complete the program, they will have established a beautiful personal home library of their own. These initiatives represent our commitment to giving every child the strongest possible start right here in our neighborhood schools. I would like to now introduce long fellow student, one of our preschoolers, Diego Calzada Ross, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Pledge of Allegiance. In the flag, to the United States of America. Free, public, righteous hands. Nation, God. And this home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before Diego goes, I would like to, I would like to, we have a, we have a certificate for him and it reads, Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition is proudly presented to Diego Calzado Ross for the leading the Pledge of Allegiance at the Azusa Unified School District Board Meeting, December ninth, twenty twenty five, signed by Board President and Superintendent. At this time, can we have my colleagues join me with the picture with Diego in the middle? They can move up to the front. I think this is the, the best part about being a board member, being able to see the different children from the different schools come and perform the Pledge of Allegiance, and especially when they're that young to be put on the spot and to actually follow through. So thank you, Diego's mom, Mrs. Ross, and she's not here, but hopefully she, she sees this again, and she knows that we're very thankful to her. Now, moving on to item two point one, we have public comment on the agenda or non-agenda items. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Before we start, I would like to ask, how, how many, how many cards do we have? Twelve. We can go ahead and start. None on Zoom. Great. Awesome. Great. Well, welcome to our board meeting. I'm so glad our, our room is filled with people today. We, we love it when we get visitors. So we can go ahead and start with our first public agenda, sorry, first public comment with Aliyah Torres. If you can please come to the.
Good evening, Board Members, Staff and Community. My name is Aliyah Torres, and I am the co-captain of Azusa High School's cheer team. I'm standing here today not just for myself, but for every girl on my team who shows up, works hard and gives everything she has to represent our school with pride. We cheer for every athlete, every game, every moment where spirit matters. We are always there for our school, but lately it feels like our school isn't there for us. As co-captain, I see the frustration on my teammates' faces when we get pushed out of the gym again and again. When boys' teams get priority again. When we're told to make it work in hallways, outside on concrete or blacktop or in unsafe spaces. We give the same dedication, the same hours, the same heart, but we are not given the same treatment. And this is more than just scheduling. This is about fairness. This is about being valued, and this is about what we are teaching girls in our district about their worth. I want to remind the board that Title Nine is a federal law that protects students from sex-based discrimination in any schools that receives federal funding. Title Nine requires schools to provide equal opportunities, equal resources and equal access regardless of gender. Boys' teams automatically receive the best gym times when girls' teams are left with whatever is left over. When cheer and stunt, a predominantly female sport, is consistently pushed aside, that isn't equal. That isn't fair, and it does not reflect the expectations Title Nine sets for schools. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for what we have earned. The same chance to practice safely, to improve and to represent our school with pride. As co-captain, it breaks my heart to see my team working so hard, only to be treated like our sport doesn't matter. It does. We matter. So today, I respectfully ask the board to, one, provide fair and equal gym time for the cheer team, the stunt team and the comp team, the same way it is provided to the boys' teams. Acknowledge cheer as a real athletic program deserving of safety, respect and space. And make scheduling and facility access truly equal, not based on gender. We love our school. We love our sport, and all we want is a chance to be treated with the fairness and respect that Title Nine promises to every student. Thank you for listening and thank you for giving us the chance to be heard.
Next on the list, we have Alexa Figueroa.
Good evening, Board Members and Community. I wanted to bring attention that I find it hard to imagine why any district would allow sports like guard and stunt, cheer and comp to practice in freezing weather, constantly being bitten by mosquitoes, while other sports are able to go inside and stay warm. A lot of players are disappointed to not get as much practice time as other sports due to rain, extreme heat waves, extreme cold, and excusing the warm temperatures this week. The weather drops down to fifty to sixty degrees now. We don't get a lot of light, and that makes it more dangerous to stunt, given that we can't see as clearly as we would. I understand that it's due to daylight saving times, but why should that even matter? A player's safety should be much more valued in any condition. Cheer, stunt and competitive just so happen to be one of the sports that are usually not considered sports and are female-dominated ones. It's disappointing to see females not get enough attention and to top it all off, not the same treatment that we deserve. As a sport, we bring the pep and spirit to Azusa High School. If some of you know the term Title Nine, which prohibits gender-based discrimination in education programs and activities, and that's the situation the majority of us feel we are in. Not only are we players, we are also students at Azusa High School who care. And I feel more attention, treatment and recognition should be upheld to this team. Even though some of the players are graduating this year, I know they want the upcoming classes to be treated better than before. So please, let's make a change and take a step forward in making a stand for Azusa High School team. Thank you for hearing me.
Christina Castañeda, and can we have Valeria Alvaran right, right behind her, ready to go?
Good evening, Board Members, Community and our Aztec cheer family. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share the realities of our cheer and stunt program. I'm here to provide factual information about our current practice conditions so that we can work together on safer, more equitable solutions for athletes. Our team currently practices outdoors on a separate campus. And I want to kind of clarify that I wrote this yesterday morning. So things have changed since before this meeting, but I feel like that was just a little too late. I still want to advocate for the things that were missing as of yesterday morning. I wrote, we do not have access to an athletic trainer, access to ice or an A E D machine, which we were just given yesterday. Lighting is limited. We use our camera flashlights so that we can actually see grips at night. We have to practice close to our blue benches so that we can get the light from that. So our lighting is limited. Our athletes are practicing in conditions that are not comparable to other varsity sports on campus. These are basic safety resources that all student athletes should have access to. Our cheer stunt, or excuse me, our cheer and stunt mats are stored outdoors behind the gym closets. They haven't been professionally cleaned or sanitized since we received them three years ago. This is a significant, there is significant wear and tear. And there's dust. There's, I can't imagine what's on the mats, being that we use them outdoors in very cold weather and extreme warm weather and how they've been stored throughout the years. It just exposes the mats to dirt, moisture, bacteria, and that's unsafe on its own. Our equipment can't stay safe and sanitary in the conditions of us using them outdoors. They're also not meant for outdoors. They're meant for inside because we are an indoor sport and they're not meant to be placed on concrete. We're actually not supposed to be practicing on concrete. If you look at the, the safety rules for, for cheer. Our athletes are only, the only varsity team that consistently practices outside. No other sport has had to alternate like we do. We're actually the only team that practices consistently outside. We have no safe door, safe indoor option, and we cannot store our mats in the main campus anymore despite being allowed to for so many years. Without indoor space or proper storage, our athletes cannot train safely or efficiently. Last year, we suggested that sports rotate in the gym. While that sounds equitable on paper, it would leave stunt with about an hour of real practice time. That's given the setup, the breakdown and a warm-up. Again, I'm just going to go based off of the whole Title Nine thing. I think that we just need to be treated fair. And they're going to speak for us, so I just appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Can we please get Karen Dalva standing right behind. Thank you. Go ahead, Valeria.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Valeria. I'm one of the captains this year for A H S Cheer, Stunt and Comp. Today, I just wanted to bring up a concern of mine that I've had for the past three years that I have been on the team. Our practice base has always been not the best. We used to have the NPR, which has now been turned into a theater, so we were kicked out. We now have to practice every day outside. As we go into the winter season, rain cancels our practices more and more often due to us not being able to get equal gym time. Our mats were very, very costly. Also have gotten beaten up and very dirty due to our practices being held outside to the point where we have found cockroaches inside of them sometimes. The way we practice, when practicing in cold, our bodies have to work harder to complete our stunts. With this, something could be very dangerous, and I personally, from experience, have gone through it very, very many times. I'm sorry. If our bodies aren't able to be at our best, it can lead to very dangerous circumstances. It can lead to girls falling on top of each other dead weight. I just ask that you please take into consideration everything that everyone is going to share. Although I'm a senior this year, I really want next year to be better for everyone on the team. I just want, I just want equal treatment because for the past three years, and I know very more years, my coach has been advocating for us, and not much has changed, not until this year. Things haven't changed. And for three years, I know that we've been asking for more gym time or just a safe space for us to practice so that we don't have to have any of these, these concerns. But, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Can we please get Alexa Sanchez? Start Karen.
Good evening, fellow Azusa Unified District Board Members. My name is Karen Dalva, and I'm also one of the captains of Azusa High School Cheer, Stunt and Comp Team. I wanted to advocate on behalf of my team and to bring attention to the equal, unequal opportunities that are given to us as teammates. I have been part of this program for three years and counting. During all the three years that I've been here, our access to our resources have, our resources needed in order to be successful have been constantly limited. We always have to hold our practices no matter the weather condition, which can be rain or shine, hot or cold. In fifty-degree weather or ninety-degree weather, we still show up and try to make the best out of it. Like Val said, our coaches have always been advocating and trying their hardest to fight for any gym time slots that we can get a hold of so we can have a roof over our head. And we still hold these practices and get gym time. But occasionally, and even when we do get gym time, it's always like shared, so we don't really have that much access to be able to do our fullest potential. We were given the opportunity to practice inside the NPR, which Val mentioned has been turned into a theater, so we can't practice there anymore. Last year, we pushed with what we had and managed to make our way to C I F for stunt, to the playoffs, and as our coaches always mention, we're not fighting for special treatment. We're just fighting for equal treatment, which is what we want. And I just hope that you guys can take into consideration what we all mentioned. Thank you.
Eileen Rios, if you can step up. Okay. Go ahead, Alexa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexa Sanchez, and I'm also one of the co-captains for the Azusa High School Cheer, Stunt and Comp Team. Today, I want to talk about something important. Giving the stunt and cheer team and comp fair access to the same facilities, opportunities and resources that other sports teams receive. Stunt is a real sport. We train hard, we condition, we lift, we practice stunts, and we perform at school events to support our team and represent our school with pride. Day after day, we show up for the school in several ways, supporting clubs on campus. Several of our members are part of different clubs. We actually have the president of the Best Buddies Club, which includes students with special needs in the school. We also have the president, I think it's two, of the art club at school, and overall, we just add to the positive culture at A H S. However, when it comes to us, we are not shown up for in the same ways. To perform at our best and stay safe, we need proper space, just like every other team. Right now, the stunt team, the comp team and the cheer team doesn't always get the same resources or priority as other sports teams. This isn't about taking away anything from them. It's about being treated fairly and recognizing that all athletes deserve equal opportunities. When we get pushed into smaller spaces or get uneven schedules, it affects our performance, our safety and our ability to improve. Giving us consistent and fair opportunities shows respect for the work, work that we put in. It also shows that our school and our district values all of its athletes equally, not just certain sports. Thank you.
Luis Fernandez. Okay, Eileen, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I am Eileen Rios, and I am an athlete of Azusa High School and a community of this group here. I am here to stay the opponents of our established sports programs, but the advocate for a foundational principle of fairness, equality for every student who proudly wears our school colors. We must acknowledge the silent struggle of dedication that we give with the advantages. We must ensure that every athlete is given the best possible chance to succeed. My focus tonight is on a sport that is stunt, comp and cheer. I speak not just an athlete, but as a leader. I am honored to serve as a co-captain this year, and I am prepared to step into the role of a captain for my senior season. As a leader, I feel a burden to know that my teammates are feeling this way and the struggle that we always deal with for the past years. Our stunt team is constantly left out of facility scheduling while other indoor sports, sorry, share time in this gym. We're really, sorry. Stunt requires strength, precision and more complex things, demanding a safe, climate-controlled environment, asking our athletes to execute these moves so uneven. Oh, sorry. These masks that we always have are wet due to rain, either hot cement having us to not be our full potential. It is a safety risk and a competitive disadvantage. This is why we need a commitment from this district to create a truly level playing field. This is not about resources away. It is about guaranteeing fair and equal access for all, espesh, espesh, sorry. We need to mandate is, sorry, I'm thinking of is. This is a C I F, freaking nice sport, including stunt, and we receive no attention, not whatsoever compared to other sports. We must. I'm so sorry. My commitment is deep and personal. I want the final year as my captain here to be legacy and equality. A year where the stunt team finally has the same chance to train safely and compete fairly as every other team in the district. By implementing these changes, we send a clear, powerful message to every athlete that our sport matters, and we need an environment where all of our, where all of our athletes thrive. Thank you.
We have Denise, if you can get ready to speak after. Luz.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Fernandez. I am team mom for Azusa Cheer. I'm here on behalf of the cheer parents. You say you want to create a safe and caring environment, but when it comes to cheer, that's yet to be seen. I've had my children in sports in the past, and I can say that it is not equal to cheer. If you have been a coach or any type of parent, you know what it takes to be out there. You know how much you want your kids to be safe and you want to make sure they have everything that they need. I, as a parent, I'm just, I kind of say that I'm in the side, I'm on the sidelines, right? I'm watching every single girl, every single day when they do practice. I'm like, they put their heart into this. And they're the ones that are always helping out other teams, other football and basketball. They cheer for Azusa. They represent Azusa. And I mean, why wouldn't you want to create a safe space for those that represent Azusa solely, right? I mean, it's, they, there's been so many girls in the past that have gotten hurt because it's not safe. Like they were saying, they're, they get bitten outside. There's bees all over the place. They're, you know, if it rains, they have to work with the rain. I mean, if it's pouring, yes, it gets canceled. That means it takes time away from them practicing and their competitions. Which in reality, you know, I know you guys want a good representation of your school. What better way to show you that cheer has been a really good representation, right? Coach, I mean, coach has done amazing. All coaches have done amazing. And again, like I said, as a parent, I just wish they had more. I wish I could give them more. I wish there was a way to make sure that we could make the time to put them in the gym or just be safe in general, or where they change, or how they go about things, you know, they're, I know some people say it's, they're not considered a sport, but they do just as much as any football player, any basketball player, any other teams of sports. And, you know, I wish things would change. I know they have said it in the past. I have said it in the past. I have spoken, you know, to, to the principal as well about the safety of the kids. It, sometimes it seems like we're, we're hurt, but we're not hurt. We say it, and it just doesn't get carried out. Again, as a parent, I would like to see that change. I know for me, this is my daughter's last year. Um, again, as a parent, I would like to see that change. I know for me, this is my daughter's last year. And maybe people will say like, oh, she doesn't care. I do care because my daughter has been here so many years. And again, I've been a parent of other sports and they've been very well taken care of. They make sure that everything is taken care of, but what about cheer? You know, shouldn't they have their last year at least to, well, my daughter and everybody else. This way in the incoming years, you know, they can be taken care of as well or be safe. And they don't have to be outside, like they said, in the cold and they have blankets sometimes and it's, it's sad, but you know, I mean, they do what they have to do. They work really hard. You know, as a parent, I can't tell you how much of an adrenaline I get just watching them. It's, I'm a proud parent and I'm a proud mom. So we just want to make sure that we ensure their safety with whatever you guys can. I mean, I'm sure. Um, you guys have heard everybody else out. There's still more people to speak out. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Shyla Altamira? Denise, go ahead.
Hi, hi, good evening. My name is Denise and I'm one of the cheer coaches. I've been cheering since I've been five, I was five years old and I'm now twenty-two. Throughout the years that I've been cheering, I never practiced outside except at Azusa District. So competitive cheer and stunt is an indoor sport, so that means we should be practicing inside. Volleyball practices inside, basketball practices inside, badminton practices inside. All, all indoor sports practice indoor, so I'm not sure why we don't as well. I don't really mind not having a safe space for myself while I was at the Azusa District, but I do mind for my girls. This is my fourth year coaching and I have been at Azusa High School and I was cheering all four years and Coach Christina. Coach Christina is actually my mom and I'm coaching alongside her and she's been asking for a safe, safe space to practice since I was in eighth grade, which was nine years ago, and we still don't have a place to practice. We practice in extreme, extremely cold weather, extremely hot weather, in the rain, in the dark. Sometimes it's fifty-five degrees, sometimes we have to end practice earlier because I don't want my athletes to be practicing that in that weather. And like Eileen said, it's a competitive disadvantage and I know that you guys want the best and I want the best and I want my girls to be the best. In order to do so, we do need a safe space to practice. They can't constantly, constantly be wearing their blankets, keep taking off their sweats, putting them back on, taking off their sweaters, putting them back on. Like everyone has said, it is very dangerous to practice in the dark. You cannot see your grips. We do use our phones and our flashlights, multiple people use flashlights to actually see the grips that we do. And like Val and Karen said, we did have the NPR, but it was taken away from us um, due to the theater being built. And a solution I can offer is the east campus locker room. I don't want a solution for next year's team. I want a solution now for my girls now because there's still time. And like I said, I want my girls to be the best and I want our district to have the best and I want to win CIF. In order to do so, I do need a safe space to practice for my girls. We're not asking for special treatment, we're asking for equal treatment. Thank you.
Sheila Hernandez, if you can step up. Shyla?
Hello, everybody. My name is um, Shyla Altamira and I am a senior this year on um, the AHS Cheer Stunt and Competitive Cheer Team. Um, I've been in uh, this cheer team since I was a freshman, so that is the summer of my eighth grade year. And I had not seen any access to any gym time or any place for us to just feel like it's home since I had came and I have been a part of this, this team. And I just think that it's uh, very unfair because there are a lot of sports that we have at our school and a lot of them have these equal access and my mom is Luz Fernandez, right? So um, she's saying that we had, she had a lot of kids who had a lot of fair treatment, which is true because over the years I've seen it happen. I've I've been a part of this committee for a really long time and I've seen this access and I I've seen my sister, she was in color guard as well. She would have to practice as outside too, and I remember seeing the cheer team outside as well. It has been since that for the longest time. My sister has graduated. She's twenty-two, twenty-three now and that's a really long time ago. And um, like everybody is saying, like we've had access to certain things like the NPR room and we've had access to a teacher's lounge and to the seniors lounge, but it's not really like a, a good place for us to practice because this is a really dangerous sport. And yes, it is something that we like sign ourselves up for, but there's only so much that our coaches can do. They're not professional or like athletic trainers, like this is no heat to them, but you know, an ice pack, an ice pack is not gonna like save my life, okay? Um, like Val said, like it's, it's hard because you know, it's dark outside and it's cold and when you get hurt, you get hurt. The cold does not make it better. I'm with my mom after practice, we're walking to the store and I'm, my body hurts so bad because this cold is like taking control of my body that just, it hurts me so bad, like the pain is just twice as bad. And you know, I push myself and I do these things um, just so this team can be seen and respected and we do, we do these things because we want to be seen and respected. We, we are more than happy to cheer for every sport to do everything that everybody asks. But when it's time for us to ask for that favor, nobody, nobody tries, nobody says anything. And no other sport like speaks for us like that. We're willing to share like certain things with them and we're willing to show up and represent them and represent our school, but nobody's really representing us. Um, this isn't a lot that we're asking for because you know, like that, like they're saying title nine, like equality, like that's just something that we really need. Because um, as girls, like we're really trying to push and show that we can take care of ourselves and we can make a name for ourselves and there's no way that we can make a name without getting noticed and recognized and you know, we need resources that you guys can provide for us. Um, these resources cannot be provided by our coaches. They can only do so much. They can come and ask you guys, but the rejection that we get all the time doesn't make it better for the new incoming years. I'm a senior and I really want like just change to come for our next year's class and I really want a lot of these um, incoming seniors and these incoming juniors, like just the more generations to come to have access to these things, to have access, equality, sorry.
The time has, has stopped. I apologize. Thank you for your comment. We have Jasmine. And at the podium, we have Sheila Hernandez.
Hello and good be, well, good evening to you all. My name is Sheila Hernandez and I am a part of ASB and the cheer team and I have been for the past four years. But I am here to speak off on behalf of my team. For the past four years, we have been ignored and silenced by our administrators. It's upsetting to know for the past four years, we have asked for equal opportunities and we have and continue to be shut out. But that ends today. We are done playing, being silenced and it's time for us to speak up. Our coach Christina offers silent cheer, competition and stunt. And all everyone sees is a bunch of girls who bring school spirit, but it's so much more than that. We spend hours training and ask hours training and conditioning, striking to get better. So I'm asking you, how is that fair that we aren't equally treated like every other sport? Stunt and competition is a CIF sport. We fall, we get hurt, but we get back up. My team has no access to locker rooms, so what do we do? We carry our things around all day while every other team has access to locker rooms when we change. While everyone else is changing, where is the cheer team changing? We change in the restrooms, so I'm asking you again, how is that fair? We have twenty-eight girls on the team, so you can imagine how hard it is to change in ten, in ten minutes and only two restroom stalls. We only have ten minutes to change because we have to work around the time we have to do to daylight savings. When we get hurt and injured, who is there to assist us other than Coach Lizzie? Stunt and competitions are indoors, indoor sports. Are indoor sports because and it's not fair that we aren't treated equally. I ask you that you take everything I just said into consideration and what my team said. Thank you.
We have Jasmine. Do we have any blue cards after Jasmine? Okay, this will be our last speaker.
Hello, good evening. My name is Yasmin Quintana Inojos. I'm here on behalf of my team. We constantly show up for our school. We perform at spirit events, school, football games, basketball games, volleyball games and every event we're, we're invited to. We are proud to support our teams and represent our school with spirit and dedication. What we are asking for is simple equality. All other sports that are scored are given space to practice inside. We're the only varsity team that is required to practice outside and this creates challenges that others do not face. This is not just about fairness, it's also about safety. Cheer stunt and comp routines require stable flooring, proper lights and safe conditions. Practicing outside means dealing with uneven ground, harsh weather and sometimes almost no lighting. When it gets dark, it becomes extremely easy for girls to get injured, especially when we are lifting, tumbling and stunting. I also want to share a personal experience during practice. I was stung by a beam and I am allergic. Thankfully I have great coaches who were able to help me as soon as possible, but situations like this should not have happened during that a school practice and this shows how unsafe outdoor condition, conditions can be for us. All we are asking for is the same opportunities as other varsity teams. A safe indoor space to practice so we can continue representing our school at our best. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, since those are all the blue cards and no one has raised their hand on Zoom, we will continue with our agenda item. We're moving on to item three point one, discussion of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Azusa Unified School District AUSD Facilities Worksheet. Mr. Ortega, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, Board President. Um, tonight we have a study session. Uh, we have one item uh, on the agenda, uh, and that's our facilities worksheet. Uh, which we have been working on now for uh, several years. Uh, we do have some um, some protocols and activities and objectives for tonight. Uh, but before we jump in um, in a heavy way, um, I would like uh, Latasha to kind of just ground us. I know it was only September since we saw this, but just kind of ground us on the facilities worksheet. Uh, and then provide some, some small updates that have happened to the worksheet uh, since you saw it in September.
Thank you Superintendent Ortega. Um, so we have displayed on the screen um, is the facilities worksheet um, that the board education um, reviewed last September. Um, this is the same worksheet that was brought for consideration when we had it in three tiers. Um, that was approved back in May of twenty twenty-two. So everything that we see in green are projects that were border proof by the board education, but are currently in progress. If they are in a yellow, they are also projects that were previously approved by the board education, but they are completely completed. Um, so with this, um, what we have on here is also the sections in gray, which are all projects that were not previously approved by the board education. Before the hopes of the conversation of this evening, we have went one step further of updating all the amounts and the gray sections based off of current quotes, current estimates and are the going rate at this time. We still do have the shortfall that was projected at the bottom where it shows. Give me one second to make sure I can go down. Thank you. One second. So we have here the other, um, the part that remains the same is the shortfall of the eight point eight million dollars. That is um, primarily attributed to the prior commitments of the modernization project for Paramount, Dalton and Lee. Um, another update we have is the section right here, which is the um, prop, the proceeds from the sale of the property. Um, these are the non-refundable deposits that we currently have on hand, which equates to four million dollars. So from the last September um, discussion that we had, discussed this in detail, the only two changes on this worksheet are the sections in gray, which have updated numbers based on the information we have today, as well as all of the deposits that we have received to date.
Any questions? Again, we went through this in September, but before we jump in heavy into uh, today's discussion, any questions about the, the worksheet in and of itself? We are going to get deep into the worksheet in, in our, in our uh, protocol, but just anything about the four million non-refundable updated quotes, anything like that.
Colleagues? Board member clear?
Not, not question, but just procedurally, uh, will we have, do we have printed copies of, of these?
Uh, we don't have printed copies of these. We can get some if we, if we want to, but we do have something like a sister document. And if that works, great. If not, we can print these. Okay?
Would anybody like them printed here on the dais?
I, I have printed of this, of the documents and we can print these as well if you need them once you see these.
I wonder if, just to, to save time and as an additional layer of precaution for, for later, I, I don't, I don't know if, if we can print on, I bet tabloid might be the largest that we could do without like pretty easily here in house. Um, that, that might be helpful.
Okay.
We could have it for all of us, please.
Yeah.
Board member Benavides?
We'll print for.
Yeah.
Just in case. Okay.
Board member Ramos, okay. Thank you for that, Board Member Girl. I think that would be um, that would be actually really good for, for us to be able to have it concrete. In our hands, so we can dive deep into what we will be discussing tonight.
Okay, any other questions regarding just the, the, the worksheet? Again, I know that we see it all the time, but any questions regarding that in terms of the minor updates? Okay. Uh, so uh, Latasha is going to be passing out uh, a packet uh, for you. Um, I want to start us off by um, laying out what the objectives are for today uh, for the Board of Education. Okay? So objective number one is we are looking, staff is looking uh, to see if the board wants to begin some additional projects, meaning the gray projects. And or if they don't want to begin any additional gray projects. So maybe the board feels, based on the facilities worksheet, we're eight million plus already short on the things that the board has already given direction for. But again, just for context, in previous meetings, we already know that uh, we don't need that eight million right now today, right? These are big projects, uh, the biggest ones being uh, Dalton, Lee and Paramount. Um, and we feel relatively confident that when that money is needed, it's going to align uh, past probably the sale of the properties. Yes, ma'am? Yes. So right now, currently, right now, today, the, the projects that the board has already given direction to, for us to, to begin, to move forward with. Those projects, we are eight million dollars plus in the hole, right? But in order for those projects to continue, we do not need that eight million dollars right now today. Because there are uh, DSA approvals and uh, uh, drawings and you know, just a lot of, a lot of things that, that eight million, when we need it, we feel relatively confident that by that time, we should have sold a property, a couple of properties, so that eight million can be addressed with the sale of a property or properties. And what we do know in addition to that is that right now, we do have in the bank four million dollars from the non-refundable deposits that the three properties that have passed due diligence, we already have. So maybe we have laid out three options here in your objectives. Maybe the board feels, you know what? We are currently eight million dollars in the hole. Yes, we do have four million in the bank. But I don't feel comfortable, we don't feel comfortable starting new projects with the uncertainty of where we are. And so we as a board, our direction is just continue with the projects that we have given you authority. Know new projects, let's revisit this in June, let's revisit this in August, whatever the board wishes to decide. We revisit it at a future date, bring new information and the board can decide that. So option one is super conservative. Don't really feel like we should start new projects right now. A mid, possibly. A middle option is, okay, we understand that that eight million dollars. But we hear you that you feel pretty confident that with the sale of a property like that, we'll take care of that. But we do have four million in the bank right now. So maybe, uh, a, a mid decision or a mid option is, why don't we use the four million dollars that's in the bank? And use that to launch new projects? Or, option three, you feel very confident, we have four properties for sale. We know what they're being sold for, it's been on our agendas. Why are we Mickey Mouseing this? Let's four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-five million dollars. And let's start moving in the direction to start launching some of these projects. Knowing that eventually there will be monies, uh, there for, uh, for, for projects. So we've kind of just given you kind of three scenarios, right? One, ultra-conservative, let's not move forward with anything, we're eight million dollars in the hole. Let's see what happens, bring this back later. A semi-conservative, I guess maybe not ultra, but while we have four million dollars in the bank, we can take, that, that is money that we have right now, let's use that and that will become our budget to decide which projects we do. Or, again, uh, you feel, uh, a little bit more confident and you want to increase the amount of money that we start to move forward with projects. Before I open, uh, before I turn it back to Board President for the board to have a conversation and decide where we're, where we're going to land as a board. As a Board President and as obvious, uh, Board Vice President is not here today.
Uh, but Board- Correction, Board Clerk.
Board Clerk, thank you so much, uh, is not here today. Uh, and she did, uh, send something, you have it in, in, in print in front of you. Uh, but just for the record, I'd like to read it so that, uh, the audience can, can hear that. Uh, I am unable to attend today's important school board meeting regarding facilities, uh, because I have had this trip planned for a year. I would like to share my input on this very important matter. I understand that all these projects are crucial. Some are related to school safety, while other concerns the well-being of students, staff and the overall health of our schools. I believe we should wait until Sierra High School is ready for occupancy before we start working on that site. I also believe we should wait on the community conference center at Center Middle School. I think we should reach out to Supervisor Ilasolis for financial assistance. This facility will serve the community on the south side of the two-ten freeway, an area that currently lacks access similar to the north side of the two-ten freeway. I would like, like to active, I would like to advocate for the following to be done. The kitchen upgrades at Azusa High School with a cost of two point nine million dollars. Upgrading the kitchen will help students receive healthy food with better equipment and will also create a safer, more efficient working environment for employees. Number two, the Azusa High School courtyard renovation with a cost of three point two million dollars. This is long overdue for safety reasons and to improve accessibility. I will, it will make it easier for students and staff to walk during rainy days. These two projects will cost six point one million dollars. Therefore, I would advocate for a budget to support them. So, that is, um, something that was submitted by Board Clerk. And so Board President, um, I would like to turn it over to you to see if, uh, the board can come to some kind of consensus in terms of, uh, where, uh, where it wants to land in terms of zero budget or some budget.
And, um, would you, I would like to ask our board, would you guys like to wait for the printed copies to be in our hands? Would you guys like to go ahead and start our discussion?
I'd be ready to, I, I'd be ready to start and maybe I would ask, uh, Mr. Mall if you could re, cat, re-display the, the spreadsheet in the meantime?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that, great. Who would like to go ahead and start this discussion? Board Member Greer?
Could, could, just for intel, could you, uh, available funding, the, the, the section on the left? Where it looks like it says grand total thirty-four point seven million?
Yes, sir.
Much closer on this side. So.
Of course.
I, I have thoughts, but I just want to, I just want to ensure that my, my assumptions are correct. That when we are looking at these, these monies, because I know one of, one of the things we've talked about is we have four million in the bank. But if we are, if we are being accurate and technical, we have thirty, thirty-four point seven million dollars in the bank for, for facilities projects, thirty million of that being measure, measure K funding. Would that be accurate to say?
That is accurate.
And also when we say that we have four million in the bank, but we have, now if we're looking, uh, bigger picture and trying to understand net, if we're saying that we have a shortfall of eight million dollars and if we say that we have four million in the bank, that would act technically be an, be inaccurate because we're actually negative four million if, if we count the cost of-
Yes, sir.
Project. So, my sense, just to hop right in and I, and I'll, I'll be bold to throw something out there because we started this conversation a few, few months ago. I tend to be pretty conservative on these, on these kinds of things and, and when we're, how we're spending one-time monies, for ongoing things. I, I, I tend to, to talk about things from, from much more of a conservative standpoint. My perspective on this is a little bit different, but only, only a little bit. Maybe, sorry, one more question for context. Based off of the sale of the total four properties, can, can someone remind me, what is the, the total amount that we are expecting to receive on the other end of escrow for each, or, or, or a total for, of the four programs?
I can be doing that in the background really, really quickly, but it's somewhere around a hundred million dollars.
So let's say a hundred million, uh, for, for the sake of conversation and then we can figure out what that number is. With that being said, and recognizing how long it takes for, for programs to get, for properties and projects to get off the ground and going, and knowing that we do have dollars in the bank, I would hate to see us lose time, uh, when, when we, when we would be able to utilize some of this time. I don't, I don't, it doesn't appear to me that we necessarily have a cash flow issue. As much as it seems like the, the greater issue is ensuring that there are enough funds available to accomplish the, the projects. With that said, my recommendation would be that we, that we look to, um, allocate twenty-five percent of what, uh, of the amount that we're expecting to receive. And so if that is for the sale of four properties and if we're anticipating that to be a hundred million dollars, that we allocate up to twenty-five million dollars. I would also recommend that because we have an eight million dollar shortfall, um, for, for some of the projects that we have communicated that we, we would get done, that we subtract that eight million from the twenty-five so that that is, so that's covered and taken care of. So then I would look and say, um, twenty-five minus, minus the eight million and that would be the number that I recommend that we use, uh, for the purposes of, of allocating, uh, for future projects. What, last thing, what that does for us, there is some risk involved there because we would be spending money before, uh, properties were, were sold. Where I have a, where, where I would advocate for some, some, uh, uh, risk, if you will, there is the fact that if somehow the properties got cut by twenty-five or by seventy-five percent, then, then, uh, we would still have those dollars, or if somehow there was a delay in one of the sale of properties, but two properties were sold. Um, I think it just puts us in the best position to still have enough funds, uh, to ensure that those projects that we advocated for, uh, were completed.
Great. We have Board Member Benavides?
So I had, um, just for clarification, because I kind of had the same concern. So what I'm understanding is that in non-refundable deposits, we have a total of a hundred million dollars coming our way. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
In the sale of the four properties-
We have a hundred million. What about in non-refundable monies?
Right now, we have four million dollars in non-refundable monies, meaning if these sales fall.
Right.
And, oh shoot, we did not sell, they fell under, right? We still would retain that four million dollars.
Okay, do we have any more non-refundable money coming our way?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know that total, the total lump sum of all the non-refundable monies?
I do not know, uh, that amount. We do have one property, uh, which is the Mountain View property that still has not passed, uh, due diligence. We're hoping that that passes soon. Uh, once that property passes, then we will get additional, uh, deposits there, but I do not know that number off the top of my head.
I, I too tend to be pretty conservative, so I would think that we consider looking at that non-refundable value so that we could play around with your scenario, Board Member Greer. And then also I wanted to ask about, um, if you could give us a quick update on the surplus property, Mr. Ortega? Just kind of a snapshot where we're at. So you, I don't know if you have that for each of the properties, that's a lot to say, and then I'll go on to another question, other comments.
Sure. Um, we do have, um, Ellington, Powell and Sierra, uh, have all passed due diligence. And therefore that's why we are capturing their four million dollars. At our board meeting, uh, next week, uh, there is an amendment, uh, coming to the Board of Education for the Sierra High School, uh, property. I don't recall which board meeting, but so several board meetings, uh, ago, uh, there was an amendment for that property that said the price can go down to twenty-five point five million dollars. The amendment that's coming to the Board of Education next week, uh, has raised that amount to I believe is twenty-six point seven million, million dollars. And so that number that we thought was going to be twenty-five point five actually got better. It's still a decrease from the original price, but it's better than what we had anticipated of that twenty-five point five. So that will come to the Board of Education, uh, on, uh, on the thirteenth, sixteenth. And we are hopeful and very, um, feel confident that the Mountain View property, um, will close, I'm sorry, will go through the, um, due diligence period soon. I can't, I can't really estimate exactly when, but we are hoping that that property makes it through that initial hump. And once we do, then all four properties will be moving along the flow, uh, to get to, to get to close. Uh, each property has a different close date, um, but that's kind of where we are, uh, currently right now. Powell is probably the property that is most advanced and, and closer to a close.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. I think too with, uh, non-refundable deposits is, I think for clarification, I would like to know when the non-refundable deposits, if there's like a timeline where we know we've, they're all in, in hand and they're not going back. If we have a date, I don't know. And then also I think that, um, if we look at the non-refundable deposit and maybe take into consideration, uh, the scenario that Board Member Greer has suggested, I would like to see maybe somehow phasing in certain projects so that we, we don't, we don't completely stop and not move forward, um, on some of the improvements. We, in particular, those that concern safety and, um, for our school, for our students. But I really think that we should look at maybe phasing in some of the projects. I think you said, um, Ms. Jamal, that the gray are those that are, that are pending, right? For our, for approval, the gray?
Gray are projects that have not, um, we have not received approval to start those projects.
So those could be either phased in or we could, is that something, Mr. Ortega, we would be voting on tonight or how does that work?
Yeah, so step one is for the board to decide, no monies, board meeting, board study sessions over. Four million dollars, based on the non-refundable, uh, Board Member Greer asked questions and clarifications. Or what's on the table right now, and Board Member, I'm going to ask for clarification. And it's my fault because I keep saying eight million, but it's actually closer to nine million, eight point nine. So if we use the nine million dollars, I think what Board Member Greer, and please correct me if I'm wrong, he's saying, no, not zero, no, not four. It's risky but conservative. Let's decide as a board that we're going to use a sixteen million dollar budget to decide on now which projects, and that'll be part two of our meeting. And that'll be a protocol and a process to do, but the first objective for the board, we cannot move forward to that until the board decides if it's going to be zero budget, four million dollar budget, sixteen million dollar budget as Board, uh, uh, Board Member Greer is saying, or something else.
That's it for me right now, my question.
Okay, we'll move on to Board Member Ramos.
Okay, I have a couple of questions before I think about the amounts. So the first question is just for clarification is, so the eight million dollars in deficit is that, um, those are for projects that have been approved but have not been started? Go ahead.
So not all, but yes, it's for projects that's been approved, um, but it's purely due to the modernization. So the original budget for each of the three remaining modern, uh, modernized sites was about six point five million. We've already went out to bid for Paramount where that project came in at fifteen million. So this is now updating based on what's available in Fund Twenty-One. And the new projected cost to finish all three schools, that's where we have the shortfall of eight point eight million dollars. So as far as if the project started, only Paramount has started, Lee and Dalton have not started.
Okay, um, so if we make a decision tonight on a certain amount, is there, is there a way or things we can do differently? So that as we go forward with, with the projects, we're not in the same situation where, okay, we're in the deficit again because, and I know that pricing changes vendors, um, you know, they, because of materials, et cetera, their quotes are only, you know, they, they expire after a certain amount of time, so, um, because my concern is, you know, eight million dollars is, is a lot of money, right? So my concern is that when these projects got approved and we move forward with them, um, how do we, can we put something in place so that we, we minimize that hit, you know, three, three months down the road, we're looking at this again and say, you know what? We had, we had, um, agreed to, you know, allocate twenty-five million, including the nine million. And we have sixteen million left and we picked projects A, B and C. And now we don't have those funds to finish those projects and this is going to continue. We, we just kind of keep, keep, keep going that way, right? So, um, so that would be one of my, my questions, my concerns and then a question on that. And of course, we don't have to answer right now, but that would be something that I think, um, we, we should look at to avoid any, any further surprises. As much as we can, because I know some of that is out of, out of our control as well. And then, uh, let's see, but I, I think that was the main concern that I had, um, as far as any, any clarification. And then I would kind of lean towards what, um, Board Member Greer, uh, proposed is to pick an amount and based on us knowing that there's going to be some funds coming from the sale of, of several of the properties, um, decide on that amount and then pick the projects that I think the ones that are safety rated should be of higher priority. And then, um, pick those that fall within that budget that we allocated, uh, initially, that just stick to the twenty-five million for right now. And then, but also, um, we can look at this every couple of months, right? I mean, it's not something that, that has to be postponed six months and then find out later that we didn't finish the project. So the other thing that I would suggest is that we, that we actually put this on a more consistent schedule where we're looking at this, um, so that we can avoid some of these surprises and then also making sure that we're following through with the projects and completing them and moving on to the next one. So that would be another thing that I would, I would suggest is that we put this on a, on a regular schedule or agenda so that we can, um, more effectively and efficiently get through these projects, right?
Is, is that all?
For now.
For now, okay. I'll go ahead and, we are here till midnight. I, I really appreciate this conversation because this has been a long time coming. Ever since we have decided to sell properties in our district, it, we knew it was going to take some time. But one thing we know for sure is that these properties are going to be sold. Housing is going to happen regardless whether it's two years from now, four years from now, right? We do know that- We do know that um there's some, you know, the paperwork, the DSA approvals that have to go to Sacramento. You know, that have to be approved, can take six months to a year and so forth, and that's what delays our. Basically what delays their constructing, um you know, a, a new field or new lights. Or a new place to host one of our um our sports. So, so I, I do want to go along the lines where my colleagues have shared. That they want to be a little conservative, and I want to push the bu, I want to push the, the boundaries a little bit because since we know. That this money is going to come in. I, I would like to push and not just do sixteen million, I, I would like to do forty million. We, we know that a hundred million is coming, we have so much that we owe to our students. The planning takes a long time and we know that. I would agree with Ra- uh Board Member Ramos uh being able to go ahead, because I kind of feel that we're all on the same page right now on the other. Which is um not the four million just by itself, not doing, you know, not doing anything and end this meeting right now, but you know, have a discussion in. Uh the amount, and I, I'm gonna push the envelope and go a little higher because we are going to sell the properties. This, this is gonna happen, so I would like to take this time, this next, you know, three months, you say, I agree. We, we should have another, another facilities um work uh workshop. Because at this time right now, we do have things that in, are in the gray area as we see. Um and some of the things that, you know, are, are pressing, um I, I would like to bring forth. Um and so um before moving on, because I, I have a lot more to say, I would like to do another round. Um but like I said, I, I would like to increase the amount, therefore that we can have other projects. In place for our sports. Because sports is what brings our children to our schools. And therefore I, I would like to emphasize on that and safety. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Board Greer, Board Member Greer, and we'll continue the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, um Board Member Ramos, as you were speaking, you, you reminded me of a, of another note, mental note that I had. But I, but I did not state during the first time, um and, and just to provide some, some institutional history. There was a point in time when we were steady moving forward with some of our facilities projects, and as we were moving forward with those projects. We were also simultaneously having conversations about school consolidations and school closures, and this was a time when. I, I would say rightfully so, responsibly so, members of our community came forward and said. Why is it that we are having conversations about closing down certain school uh uh campuses? And at the same time, we have active construction projects happening on those same campuses. And so I, I know that my mindset at the time, and it, and it ended up being the, the mindset of the board in general was. Let's put it in, let's put a moratorium on all projects until we determine which school sites are going to be finished, and that would be the. It would not be until then that we decide uh to, to restart those programs. What that did, because we, we made those decisions and then we, we, we gave the green light to certain projects, and then what that did. Is I, I remember there were a number of community members uh across the categories of stakeholders who came and said, hey, how come nothing has happened? And the truth is, there was a lot happening, but it's just, it takes so much time for things to happen behind the scenes. That, that it, it would appear that nothing's happening, but there actually is, is a lot that's happening, um another thing that happens is. Inflation and just the general co- costs increase of different uh products and materials. That adds to the point that I think you brought up, Board Member Ramos, about why are we seeing projects increase? So I think it was the right decision that we made to say, let's put a stop to the, to programs. But you could also, and it was, and I stand by that decision, but you could also argue that, that decision cost. The, 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 uh these uh projects to increase in price, and that's what we're now looking at. And so if we were able to give authorization to certain projects and give the green light where those can move forward uh for bid, I, I think it puts us in, in the best position. Um so I, I, but I would actually still stand by the, um I, I, I love what you're, I love the spirit behind what. Uh you're saying, uh Board Member Arianeis, I love the spirit behind it. I'm, I'm kind of pushing myself though to say twenty-five percent, the thought of forty percent. Is a bit much, I agree that these properties will certainly sell, I'm not comfortable enough to say. We know that we will have a hundred million, and so let's therefore put forth forty million. That, in my opinion, uh in my opinion, would, would over-leverage us far beyond what I would be comfortable with. I'm pushing myself at the twenty-five, um but, but the forty to me, I would have a hard time getting, getting behind uh forty million personally.
Member Benavides?
I think for me, I would like to see uh, you know, is, is like the trigger dates for close of escrow on each property. Maybe having something um in our agenda packet so that we get a better understanding as to. The close of escrow and when that triggers money coming to the district.
I can provide that right now, these are all only anticipated. Um so uh Allington, anticipated close of escrow is in November twenty twenty-six. Uh the former Sierra, which is the property uh here uh on Baranca. The anticipated uh closing date uh for that is July twenty twenty-six. Mountain View, which is the only property right now that has not made it through due diligence. The anticipated uh close of escrow is September twenty twenty-seven. And Powell, the anticipated close of escrow is March twenty twenty-seven.
Can you please repeat Mountain View's closing of escrow?
Mountain View, yes ma'am, that would be September twenty twenty-seven.
And the last one again, I'm sorry, Powell.
Powell, yeah, March twenty twenty-seven. Powell, twenty twenty-seven.
And do you happen to have the amounts readily available for these?
I, I don't know if these are the original amounts, so let me see if I can, if we can pull those up. We can pull those up, look at the last amendments, and those, that should have, I do know right now, I can find that, I can give you that really quick. The Sierra, I'll give you that really quick, and the team could probably look up the other. Uh PSAs uh to get that, but Sierra is coming on the sixteenth. And that uh purchase price is twenty-six million, seven hundred fifty thousand. If you give us one second, we'd be able to give you. The other ones.
We're showing Powell at, from September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Thirty-one point two million.
Thirty-one point two, Powell, okay?
Superintendent Ortega, I have a question.
Yes.
On the Sierra amount, does that include, does that take into account the deduction for the, for the fees already there?
Yes, sir, okay.
Which was a deduction and then in, and then in addition.
Correct, we've, we've been. Um I see Allington as of uh October seventh of this year. Twenty million, eighteen thousand. Are we missing a property? Okay, Mountain View, um I can give you the latest, but again, that one is still not through due diligence, so uh keep that in mind. Let's see. Again, this is, the, the latest that I have is from September, the September. And that price was twenty-three point five million dollars. You did the math?
Just made it up.
Okay, and then it looks like, it looked, uh Board Vice President Benavides, it looks like um. Uh Latasha has the answer to.
The deposits?
The deposits.
The total projected deposits is six point seven million, so six, seven, five, zero, zero, zero. And as of today, we received four million.
So two, so we're missing two point seven million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. So. So I, I, I have another question regarding Mountain View, what, what is the hiccup again with that? Because that's, that's a pretty big chunk of money and that takes us out through twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, ma'am, um the hiccup at that property uh has been a. Zero point six five acre uh piece of land. Um that the city has requested for the easement, and so we're trying to navigate that. Um that, that piece of land, um again, we are hopeful that we are close. Uh to, to making a decision there and settling that, and that uh an amendment comes to the Board of Education soon.
Okay, um so two of those properties, right, we're, we're at. Mountain View and Powell, and the, I mean, the board members here have stated, all of them. That we know how long projects take to get approved and go through the entitlement process with the city. Some of them are located in the unincorporated area, so LA County, their entitlement process and they're more difficult to work with. I mean, I, I know that for a fact, so. When you look at those two properties, Mountain View and Powell, those go way out to twenty twenty-seven. So that, that in itself is about fifty. Fifty-five million dollars or fifty-four million dollars, right, somewhere in there? So I think what my concern is, because that's so far out, we don't know the entitlement process. We're talking about working outside of the Azusa jurisdiction. I, I want to remain conservative, I mean, I, I love the, the element of surprise, yeah, let's do forty million dollars. Of course, we want to be able to provide improvements to our facilities and so that our students and our. You know, and our staff and teachers and everyone can benefit from them, but. As a board member, we have to be realistic, and me being a former government employee and working with the city. In the Prime and Community Development Division, I know how long it takes to. And go through the entitlement, so I want to try to take as conservative as possible as I can, so. And what I mean by that is that I would still embrace the opportunity of moving forward and not being stagnant. So I, I am open to that, um I, I believe that we have to discuss what that amount would be. So that's kind of where I stand right now, but I would like to, um moving forward, I, I do like what Board Member Ramos said is this. And I have a question about this, is that I would like to see how we can, um. I don't know what's wrong with the mic. Really, is that, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so is that better? Thank you, so what I would like to see is, um I would like to see this as a frequent item on the board agenda. So that we are moving, we're, we're ensuring the community, if anything, right? That we are moving forward, that we are looking at these, at the facilities. And I, I guess I have a question for you, Mr. Ortega, just if you could please remind me. Why is it that, or how often can, does the facilities like today come to the board?
That can come as often as every, every board meeting if that is the desire, now. Nothing wrong with that, but some of these, again, are slow-moving things, so having it like every month, I'm not sure that you would see a big difference from month to month.
Maybe every quarter would be good?
If I can also add, every time the Board of Education gives us authority, this worksheet is actually presented back to the Board of Education. Every time we break a contract or a project that's on this worksheet.
Okay, thank you, okay, I think that's all I have to say.
Board Member Ramos?
Yeah, so another question that I have is along the same lines of the process of when we approve something, right? So um so my question would be, if we come up with whatever the amount is and we pick three projects. Um what's the general timeframe, because it also depends on the prices that we're gonna pick to move forward, that we can get feedback and. You know, new quotes or proposals so that we can assess, okay, we thought that we were gonna cover three projects with sixteen million, but now it looks like. Um it's gonna be more, and then we can make an adjustment, right? So what, what's, what, what could, you know, what, what's an estimate timeframe or expectation to get that feedback?
So for almost everything in gray, we've received new quotes. Some are verbal, but if once the board gives us authority, um as soon as we get, um if it does not require us to go out to bid. Then we'll have that the next board agenda, as long as we have a written quote, and they'll start being on the board agenda starting um in January.
Okay, and so those quotes, how, how long are they valid for? Do they expire in thirty days, ninety days, generally, I mean, I?
Most of our vendors will give us six months, but as long as we tell them that it's gonna be on the next board agenda and they can see it, they work with us.
Yeah, okay, okay, so I would kind of stick to being more on the conservative side. And um do the twenty-five million with also um moving forward, planning on. Having this topic as part of a workshop or part of our agenda, I would say every other month for now. So we can kind of monitor, you know, if we make the decisions down the amount, pick the projects, and at the latest in February, we'll look at, okay, we picked three projects that are moving along well. And maybe at that time add another five, ten million or whatever else we decide on, and also based on some more feedback or some more. Um anything that's moving on the sale of the properties, right? Because we might find out in two months that one of these properties that has to go to the county or what have you, um either got moved up, expedited for some reason. Or now there's another few months because of X, Y, and Z, right? So um that's kind of where my mindset is right now, uh so being conservative, but also with the plan of. Um I would say every other month, put it on as an agenda item so we can just, so this, this can be active for us. Because there's a lot of projects to go through here, and you know, a lot of them are safety-related, and also I think it's important that we, we're moving on this. Now that the whole um consolidation of schools and property sales, a part of it has been, has settled somewhat. Now we can, you know, move on projects and get our schools to where they need to be, right, as far as facilities and updates and modernization, et cetera.
Yes, uh Superintendent?
I just, I'm trying to keep a mental note so that I can help the Board of Education. Uh Board uh Member Ramos, um are you saying twenty-five million dollars? Based on what Board Member Greer said, meaning really sixteen uh million dollars, or you're saying no, twenty-five million dollars out the gate?
Uh twenty-five billion dollars minus the nine is sixteen.
So Board President, if I may, just right now, just so, just so the board can kind of, right now there are two numbers on the, out there. There's sixteen million dollars and there's forty million dollars, so just wanna.
Correct.
Keep the board on track, those are the two numbers that are out there right now, so with two board members saying, I'm comfortable with sixteen million.
So one question for the Board President, so your forty billion was net than the, the nine million, so?
No, subtracting the nine.
Okay, so it's then it's sixteen and thirty, thirty-one?
Correct. So a- as I'm hearing the board, I, you know, I, I will still stand by the thirty-one million dollars. We, we know, right, we know that that selling of the properties, right, it, it does take time, but it's already in the process. We consolidated schools, the whole reason that we closed Gladstone Middle School, the whole reason we closed all the elementary that we did. And practically, well, all of the middle schools was for this purpose. I truly believe, and you know, um I, with my conviction, knowing that. If we plan now, right, because the prices keep going up, right, if we can. Go higher, the amount that I've, I've suggested, right, and then keep bringing it back to the board, adding, subtracting. Projects that we would, we as a board have the authority to. to bring forth, right? And you just said, Ms. Latasha, that we, as we go out to bid, right, the prices are are for six months. We have six months to play, I mean, in reality, with this.
No, the sorry, I'm hitting a button. I'm sorry. The quotes that we have right now, typically they give them a six months. But if we go out to bid, once we go out to bid, that's when the contractor is telling us how much they're gonna, they're want for the
This is an estimate then.
Yes, these are all estimates, yes, ma'am.
Right, so because it's an estimate, I would, I I would like to also continue to ask our board here to go a little higher and then we can scale it back depending on how we move forward, right? Let's dream big. Let's dream big, and I'm I'm asking you guys to please risk because of the fact that at this point right now, when we risked and we even had the conversation of closing six schools, we are the only school district in California right now that has closed so many schools. We risked it, knowing knowing that there was going to be turmoil, knowing that the community was going to get angry, knowing, and we risked it because we knew that it was the best for our district. I'm asking you guys, colleagues, to think outside the box, to think bigger. And you know what? We can scale it back depending on what that looks like eventually. We can add projects, we can remove projects, right, as we keep the conversation moving forward. Yes, Board Member Greer?
So as I'm looking at the, as I'm looking at the calendar that was described, this, that was helpful information when we're talking about uh, the, when we are projecting escrow to close for the various, for the various properties. Understanding things can move, things can change, but based off of where they are now, it says, am I reading this correctly, that it's saying July twenty twenty-six is when Sierra is scheduled to be closed? Is that, did I write that down correctly?
That is the anticipated close of escrow.
So with that, with that in mind, I here's why I'm, I, why I would still advocate for the the sixteen um as opposed to the 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 higher number. Because I think sixteen gives us, that would give us room, and I think it's with, it's, it is a risk in and of itself, but I think it gives us some, some, some cover for uh, to 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 have some responsibility here i- at at play, recognizing that six months later, if we're anticipating that there's another property closing, I think then we can have a conversation about should there be additional monies that we add in? If things go a- a- according to the plan here, it means that then five months later, another twenty million would uh would would then become available. And then we can open up and have another conversation. I would be eager to to see s- s- a a a good chunk of some things move forward. But we, but but we are anticipating seeing ha- potentially half of these dollars potentially in in our account by the end of next year. And I think that gives us, that that would give a a future version of us, whether it's all of us sitting here at the at the the table, or whether it's others that are sitting here at the dais. It would give uh us some some future decisions that need to be made whi- while while still taking some aggressive, I I think sixteen is aggressive. And we can, and I I would advocate that we go for, uh, uh, and when I did the math, I would say it's actually sixteen-five, but um.
Sixteen-five-eleven.
I left off the eleven. And seventy-eight, so, uh, seventy-eight dollars. Right, but uh, but li- so looking at that, I would still advocate for the sixteen-five. And and if we are anticipating over the summer that there's additional properties that are closing, uh, that we have some additional conversations then, and and at that point, we can add additional projects. But I I I I would still suggest that we stick with sixteen-five.
Board Member Benavides?
So one of the things that I mean, six, seven twenty-six, right, the close of Sierra, that's, we're, we're looking at seven months down the road, right? So I like what Board Member Ramos, instead of a quarterly, maybe every other month. And I, and I think, you know, maybe phasing in some approvals in in the process, so we are moving forward. And as Board Member Greer said, I mean, we may not be sitting here next, right, the following year in twenty twenty-seven, but whoever is on the dais here, you know, we've left them a roadmap for lack of a better way of putting it, so that the projects keep mov- moving forward in phases. And we're, we don't find ourselves in the hole. We're planning conservatively, right? And that we are delivering to the community and our students and our teachers, everyone here at the district. That's kind of where I stand on it. I do tend to be more conservative and because we're talking, we're still talking seven months out. The market is is pretty unpredictable right now. Especially housing, so I I really want to stay conservative.
Board Member Ramos?
Yeah, I have another question, just going back to, I guess you would call the project management side of this and the price and the the costs and quotes. So to use it as an example, and this would be for um Ms. Latasha, um, the courtyard project, which is three million two hundred and fifty thousand, right? So is it, if we decide to move forward with that project, for example, today and you start the process tomorrow, is that the price? So that's what it's going to cost us, or you still have to go out to bid?
We would have to formally go out to bid, but what we did is after the September meeting, we actually met with one of the contractors that actually would be considering bidding and said, this will be the cost. Because originally, this was barely a third, uh, one point three million dollars on there. And so once we walked it with them, that's when we received this new updated quote.
So we're pretty confident that, and I'm just using this one as an example, right, that we won't, tha- that won't go up?
Unless today.
I know, I know, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, because again, that's, okay, and then so my other question would be for, again, for you and your department. Um, depending on what projects we pick in the 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 amount, had, are there any constraints on, from the part of your department that would um impede or slow down the movement of these projects? Because we can, we can say we're going to approve, you know, sixty million dollars with the projects, five projects, but, you know, because of your resources internally, is there anything that would slow that down or um, you know, not not um, not allow it to kind of just flow, right?
No, beyond um, in ensuring that we're not interrupting instruction, there should be any, no delays on our, because majority of these projects will be contracted out. So it'll just be a ma- a matter of managing versus actually our team members actually having to do the work.
Okay, thank you. So having thought about that, and uh, thank you for those, for responding to those questions, um, I would still stick to the sixteen five, eleven, seven, eight, whatever. Yeah, um, and again, um, strongly suggest that we look at this in sixty days and um phase in, maybe in sixty days, everything moves forward well, and we say, okay, now we can phase in um, another, you know, what is the difference, fifteen million or whatever that other number is, so.
I'm 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 hearing you guys and I'm I'm looking at the numbers again, and I I guess I'm looking at it from a different perspective, not that I don't agree with you, but I'm I I'm being very optimistic, being in the district for, I would say, over forty-five years now. I believe in this district. I believe in our team. I think that we have pushed the envelope to the max when, again, we did not know we were going to be able to do this. So I am going to ask and challenge you guys to meet me halfway, twenty-three point five and fifty cents, I'm just kidding, but twenty-three point five. You know, to to start off at that number and then we can wiggle around. You know, to to meet halfway, to be able to, we're we're not deciding right now, but just to compromise, to be able to just meet halfway. It's still under twenty-five. It's not over twenty-five. But yet it's in the middle. Board Member Benavides, you said you had a question?
Yeah, there's a couple of things um I wanted just if uh Superintendent, Mr. Ortega, can clarify. One of the things that we do know, there is a shortfall of housing and not just Azusa and every community, right? So definitely the properties will sell because they have housing attached, right? So that's not, that's that's a fact, right? Whether the developers go away or not, for whatever reason, the market changes, a new developer will come to the table to negotiate the sale of the property. So, but because there is unpredictability in the market, anything could change, right? Number could go up, so I'm trying to be optimistic too. But numbers could go down as well. So with that said, um, does the, do the contracts, the purchase and sale agreements allow for any future amendments to the um, purchase and sale agreement?
Yes, all of the contracts um can be amended. Some of our contracts are on their fifth amendment. Some are on their fourth amendment, some on the third, some on the second, and to your point of unpredictability, some of the uh properties, the amendments have been for lesser amount than originally anticipated because, to your point, the volatility uh and the churn on on the market, but the the answer is yes. Amendments uh can be, can be made to um to the purchase and sale agreements. But of course, it takes two to tangle, so those amendments would have to be um, agreed upon by both the developer and the district.
Okay, so there's nothing in there that triggers um, right, no amendments to the agreements. Okay. So looking at the project sheet and staying on the conservative number of sixteen million dollars, there are projects like at Azusa High that we can address that, and even even of their estimates, they, we can address some, moving forward with some of those projects and keeping it under sixteen million dollars. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. That's all I have.
Member Benavides? Board Member Greer?
No, yeah, no, nothing, nothing more really to add, other than just for clarity, because um as I hear, as I hear us talking, it, there there could be two ways that we may be interpreting the objectives that are in front of us, because if, because um I, on one hand, I hear a saying, and so we could do this, and maybe we could get more information, we could look at, but one of our objectives tonight is to actually identify that number. Um, so it, so it's not so much that this part of the conversation that we're saving for a future conversation as much as the objective is that tonight that we land on, that we land on a, on a number. So um, and and I I hear there's kind of like two numbers-ish that we're that we're playing with, maybe we're at, we we might have landed, landed somewhere. But it could be helpful for us, and since we've said everything, just to kind of like definitively communicate then, a number that we're recommending. Um, so that way, that moves us forward onto the, to the next section. And so with that in mind, my 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 number that I would be recommending is is sixteen point five million.
Board Member Benavides?
I I would stand with Board Member Greer, just to be conservative. I I mean, I just looking at the close of escrow dates, I mean, we're talking seven months out and actually out to twenty twenty-seven on two properties, so that's, that's where I stand right now.
Thank you. Board Member Ramos?
Yeah, nothing different for me. I stand on the sixteen million, five, seven, eight, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I love being the lone wolf. Fighting. I stand by my board. The majority has spoken. Therefore, it seems like we're at six point five, sorry, I'm sorry, sixteen point, I tried to lower it. See if you were paying attention. We're at sixteen point five million and so many, however he said, yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we give direction now for for that. I would like to I would like to um actually not bring it to, th- this is a conversation that can go lengthy. And so I am going to suggest, right, to actually add a another study session and not bring it back to 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 the meeting. Um, so I I would like to throw that out there because we do have a heavy uh agenda at times. And just right now, it took us like almost an hour and a half, two hours to come on one number, right, to to be able to compromise on one number. And so when we um, looking forward, being able to look at the projects, removing projects, adding projects, it's going to be a lengthy conversation. So I I'm going to suggest we we add a new study session. According to, um, you would like to bring it back, I heard more uh, board members wanting to bring this back. I I agree with that, and I think that um it would be beneficial to also have um our Board Member Rodriguez Pena um, have a study session with us as we look forward to um speaking about the projects that we will be um embarking.
I personally was in favor of staying later at the last meeting when we were, when we were talking about this, and the, my concern was that it would get pushed back, and it would get, and it would get pushed back. Um, and so I'm concerned at the pattern that that, that that is reflecting. I think that we have an opportunity right now in front of us with the number that we've decided upon, and I think we have a uh, a a process that has been defined for us to look at arriving at at something. And so I understand the cost that that has for us by way of time. Um, but but I I would say that with as much as we have delayed things, I I I would be eager to um, to still dive in and do that work. Thankfully, also, Board Member Rodriguez Pena provided us with some documentation where she made her case and and advocated for and against certain things. And so not only would I be comfortable, but I would, I would strongly suggest that we, that we continue on with the the work, even if it extends our meeting a bit later tonight.
Anybody else have any more thoughts about that?
Yeah, my apologies. I I was confused on what you suggested. I thought you were suggesting that these discussions about the properties, instead of putting them on on a regular agenda, that we put them in work sessions moving forward, but
Cor- correct. I I did not oppose, I did not say that we should end the meeting right now.
Okay.
No, that that's not what, what I am hearing from the board is that we want this back again, right? And I would like to, not just tonight, but in further meetings, dive deeper. And yes, I am recommending that we do not put it on a full board agenda, because I would like to give the community a chance for them to come to these special meetings, right, to to hear, just speak about projects.
Okay.
That's it. But not end it tonight. No, we
That, I appreciate, I apologize, I misunderstood. Uh, but Superintendent Takea, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I mean, we have had, and and Mr. Mall, we already work into our, or we we have in the past, and and with like the sale of properties, we work in updates, and I, and it's not my sense that these if we, the the work needs to be done tonight, and if we give authorization and green light, we may be highly underwhelmed, it would seem, with what updates come in, because it might be s- still waiting on DSA for for these four projects, or the, only this one has moved so far, and there's not much more else. And so I think the substantive conversation is now, and I would imagine that until we authorize a next chunk of money and authorize a next chunk of projects, there may not be a whole lot more for us to do other than um regularly review and 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 receive a a report. I mean, it's, would would that be the sense of staff as as well?
I would agree.
So so what I'm hearing from you is that you want to decide on projects tonight?
Correct, yeah. Which is what are the orig- part of the original objective for tonight, uh, number two.
Okay. Is that, is that a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and start us then?
Um, actually, uh, Board President, I have a, we have, we have a process
Oh.
uh, to do that. Um, I'm going to move to the uh, to the center. Can I borrow one of your white sheets?
White sheets.
Uh, every board member uh should have a white table, a white piece of paper. You should have multiple
Yes.
Yes.
We don't have it yet.
You should have multiple of these. This right here are the great projects from the facility's worksheet. So you don't have to use a notebook, and you don't have to look at them. On that sheet, we have done the work for you, and we have pulled all the great projects and added them on this white sheet. Yes? Okay, so far so good? Okay, on the white sheets, what you are going to do by yourself without any conversation whatsoever, you are going to spend sixteen point five million dollars and not one cent more. So what you're going to do right now, what you're going to do right now is you are going to spend sixteen point five million dollars, and you are going to pretend that you make all of the decisions by yourself. You're not worried about nobody else. You're going to be selfish, and you're going to say, this is how I would spend sixteen point five million dollars. Now, you can go paper pencil, so we gave you plenty of these. If you need more, we'll give you more. And we also gave you a calculator, so you can keep tabs of that sixteen point five million dollars. But if you prefer, just say the word. Latasha will send you this worksheet, and then as you punch in the numbers, it'll automatically add the total for you. So I'm going to reiterate one more time. Either paper pencil or electronically, without conversation, no conversation. Each board member is going to choose projects from that white sheet, which are the great projects from the facility's worksheet. And you are going to decide how you are going to spend sixteen point five million dollars on the projects that are there, yes? One more, one more directive.
You're going to email it to us?
If you want a digital one, she'll email you. Okay, here's the last directive. Once you feel secure, I've spent my sixteen point five million dollars, you are going to capture it on the blue piece of paper. So your white sheets are like scratch paper, if you will. This is a worksheet, if you will, the digital one. But I need your sixteen point five million dollars on this blue sheet. Yes? We're going to give somewhere between ten to fifteen minutes. Latasha and I will be here close at the dice if you have questions for us, but you are not speaking to each other. You may begin shopping.
Board president, it's in your email.
It's in my email, okay.
Or vice president, would you like one? Okay. Ms. Ramos? No problem.
Quick question. Do we just put a number one, number two on, or do we just put one?
Are you on the Excel sheet? So you'll just put the amount of the project, and it'll run a total for you.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. I already went over budget. I already went over budget. Latasha, quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
So the courtyard for Azusa High School, it's three, three point two. And then we have a courtyard upgrades in Planters. So one's for Azusa, one is for Gladstone Middle School.
Yes, which line are you on, ma'am?
The bottom one, courtyard upgrades and planter improvements. GMS for five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand? Let me get to where you are, I'm sorry. Line twenty-eight? So that's for GMS only, five hundred thousand. So the first one is for Azusa High School, three point two, solely for Azusa High School. And then the five hundred thousand is for Gladstone Middle School only.
And so when we're looking at the limited locker room upgrades, are we speaking about the PE building or the outside locker room?
These are, these are the PE lockers for both schools.
Okay. Can we add that? Because to this, limited locker room upgrades, because don't they have outside lockers at Azusa High? There's no more. Is that why they're having bad problems?
Okay, so every board member individually by themselves has spent 16.5 million dollars to say these are the projects that we would like to move forward. But because you by yourself don't make those decisions. The next step is board member Greer and board vice president Benavides are going to come together. And together they're going to spend 60.5 million dollars based on what they have on their blue sheet. We're not going back to the white because then that was for not just based on what you have on your blue sheet. You are going to have one pink sheet. Board member Ariane is is going to connect with board member. Board president Ariane is going to connect with board member Ramos. Based on their blue sheets, they're going to shark tank, negotiate, influence, persuade, compromise. And they're going to come up and they're going to come up with one pink sheet. Again, we will get the feel for it again, we're thinking 10 to 15 minutes. The hard work happened in step one because now you have it on your blue sheet. We're not going back to white, you're sticking to the blue sheets. If you guys can connect and your objective is one sheet pink.
Thank you.
Alright, so now, just to recap, every board member got to decide how they were going to spend sixty point five million dollars. Then knowing that we're not an island, we got together with a partner, we willed, we dealed, we persuaded, we compromised. And now we have a pink sheet. So right now technically, there are two plans on how to spend the sixty point five, yes? Alright, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna come, this is gonna be the official Board of Education decision in terms of which projects to start moving forward, yes? Alright, so I need you to look at your pink sheets and I will be asking you questions. Question number one, do you have the Azusa High School courtyard at three point two five million dollars on your pink sheet? Okay, please. So can we agree that we will move forward with that project? Got it. Alright, do you have the digital marquees for Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School at four hundred and ten thousand?
No.
Okay, well, we'll leave that one alone. Do we have the kitchen upgrades plumbing at Azusa High School for two point nine?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and add that one, Natasha. Do we have the branding mural at GMS for forty seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars?
No.
Okay, we'll leave that one alone. Do we have the scoreboard for football at Azusa High School?
Yes.
Okay, let's add the hundred and ninety thousand. Do we have the stands and press box for the football team?
Yes.
Okay, let's add the eight hundred thousand. Do we have the stadium lights for football at Azusa High School?
Yes.
Okay, let's add the five ninety. Do we have the restroom and for the athletics program at three fifty five? Okay, let's add that. Do we have the baseball infield and outfield at Azusa High School at one point three million dollars?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the small baseball infield at two hundred and twenty five thousand?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the softball infield and outfield at Azusa High School?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the turf bullpens at a hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the dugout upgrades for baseball and softball at two hundred thousand?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Sports lighting resurfacing the tennis courts at two hundred and ninety thousand?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the community conference center at nine, at nine point one million dollars? Okay, do we have the Sierra High School and Central Kitchen at ten point six million dollars?
No.
Okay, do we have the locker room conversion at five hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, let's add that one, please, Natasha. Can you please fill that? All the way, all the way, all the way, all the way, right there, perfect. Do we have the pools at fourteen million dollars?
No.
Okay, do we have the partial underground replacement water sewer storm drain at six schools at thirteen point four million dollars?
Not six schools, we have two schools that needed, that need the water and sewer.
Got it, but you have no schools. Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the kitchen upgrades plumbing at nine point three million dollars?
Yes, one school.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the digital markings at the elementary schools for one point three million dollars?
No.
Okay, at least leave that one alone. Do we have the synthetic grass at courtyards at one, two, three, four, nine schools at two point four million dollars?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone. Do we have the courtyard upgrades and planter improvements at Gladstone Middle School for five hundred thousand?
No.
Okay, let's leave that one alone.
Did they say yes? I'm sorry. You said yes.
And then do we have the limited locker room upgrades at Azusa High School and GMS for one point one million dollars?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, alright, so let's ground where we are right now. Congratulations, the board has successfully together decided on eight point five million dollars to move forward for projects. What the board should decide right now is, hey, that was a great exercise, we all agreed on this. Staff, eight point five million dollars, please move ahead and at a future board meeting study session, we'll bring this back up and we'll get updates and we'll decide do we want to do more. Or, no, no, we decided on sixteen point five tonight, so there's eight million dollars on the board right now. Now the board would have to, the same thing that you did with your partner, now as a board, you will have to decide what else makes it to the, to the list, or what doesn't make it to the list. Board President, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I, I, I would like to hear on the ones right where the, the thoughts of, of the plumbing and the sewer, right? It, it's, we have our, we can have an open discussion on the things that you guys um, agreed on that felt that it was necessary and so who would like to go ahead and start? Board Member, start with you.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll say as I, as I got started personally and we talked about, about this, I, I found myself actually surprised by how much we could do on, of these projects with sixteen point, point five million. The reason why I put a star and I did not include it, I actually would have loved to include the, the limited locker rooms, that would have put us at sixteen point seven, so it would have been two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand more, which I would not be opposed to, to going there. What that would do for us is, in essence, every single project that is less than nine million dollars would be, would be taken care of on this, on this worksheet. And I'm thinking of a couple of things, one, just impact, if we were to do all of that and not the big ticket items, that affects impact, that gets program, that gets these, these projects started, we're submitting for DSA, we're moving things forward, it's, it's a those projects that are locked in with the different bids or not bids, excuse me, quotes that, that we've received, and so it gets the pipeline started. Also, what about some of these other projects that are on here, the, the larger ticket items? Again, based off of the conversation we had earlier, we are looking at the potential of twenty something, thirty, twenty to thirty million in July and then twenty to something, twenty to thirty something million in November, if everything goes according to plan. And when we're talking about when might we add some of these projects, I think it puts, it would put us in a position to get all of these projects started and then as, as soon as this summer, then being able to say, okay, now which additional projects do, would, would we add on? And it's a smaller number for us to do this exact same, something like this, but with a smaller number of, of items, which I think makes the work that much, that much easier. So, so I, I see impact and pride when, when, and, and almost like from a sense of the community who previously might have been asking, when are these projects getting started? We're able to do such, such work that it's like every time you turn around, there's a new, there, there's a new scoreboard coming up, there's a new field, there's new, and I think that that brings a lot of pride and appreciation for, for the work that we do. And then within a year, we may be able to start chipping away at some of these bigger ticket items when we actually have some of the dollars in hand.
Board Member Ramos. I was gonna go back and forth.
I'd hate for, could we do ones, the one side and another side, because I'd, I'd hate to speak on behalf of both of us.
Right, that's, that's, I'm going to, Board Member Ramos.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so on the, the two ticket items that we, that both President Arias and I agreed to, agreed on that, that you, you two did not, those, those I see them, and for, I'll speak for myself at this point, that's part of the infrastructure, right? The partial underground replacement with the water, sewer, storm drain, etc. And, and, and that could fall under, like the storm drain could also fall under regulation, right? So having experience of facilities, I know that these big ticket items can, can be bigger, you know, once you start dating and opening up the can of worms, so to speak, right? So I felt that if we could start attacking that, you know, there's six schools there, but if we can start with a couple of them and kind of see what we have there, and again, that's part of the infrastructure kind of day to day operation of the, of the facilities. And, and the same thing with the, with the kitchen, the upgrades and the plumbing, right? You know, ideally, we like to knock all these out and, and we're, we're gonna do that, that's the plan. But some of these other things I see as, I don't want to say cosmetic, but, um, you know, it does add the, what, what you alluded to. You know, the pride and look what we're doing, how we look and all that. So for me, the reason why, you know, we had to make a decision, why I sided with, with the other two items up below that were for the reasons that I just mentioned, it's about infrastructure, it's about day to day operations of these facilities, so.
Board Member Benavides.
So for me, one of the things initially I was looking at, I, I too had the same vision that Board Member Greer had, I said, okay, let's look at all the smaller projects, right? Let's, because there's, we could do a lot, right? There's small ticket items, it becomes a touch feel sense of pride, sense of community, the school is doing something. Some of these things are, kind of have been talked about and I think that bringing that to our students and our community that we are moving things, we're, things are moving, we're doing things, it's kind of like, vis, you know, picture yourself driving down a small city, right, like Azusa or, you know, Glendora, and you see one housing project, another housing project. You're like, especially in the community that you, we live in, you're like, wow, they're doing so much, that's great. It gives you that sense of pride. And then I, I, I said, okay, but then I, I started relooking at it and I thought, you know what, there, there are things that need to be done. The, the kitchen upgrades and those things also bring you a sense of pride, especially the students, right? So students as, as Azusa High School, I think that they're already, you know, going into adulthood and they want to feel that sense of pride. I mean, we heard tonight from some of the girls, right? That's important to them. I mean, they're just talking about mats, but that's, they touch and feel that, that's important. So I, I, I appreciate the fact that Board Member Ramos brings up, you know, some of the infrastructure. But I started thinking when you mentioned that, you know, digging up the dirt and finding out, that could increase our ticket item, right? Could take away from maybe another project, just saying. But for me, I think that and then when we look at like our, some of our close of escrow dates, I mean, they're pretty out there, seven twenty six. We, and we, we're also talking as a board about maybe coming every other month, or I forget what we said, if it's every other month revisiting this. But I think that right now, where I stand is looking at the smaller projects so that we, the, the community and the students can see there's momentum, we're doing something, and then revisiting the larger ticket items at a later date. That's kind of where I'm at right now. I mean, I, I, I like the fact that we're gonna touch the courtyard and, and then looking at the sheet, we're we're just about touching every school, whether it's an elementary school, you know, with, with the items that we do agree on, we're still looking at some of the elementary schools, we're looking at the middle school, we're looking at Azusa High School. So no one's being left behind, if, if, if I'm looking at this correctly.
And my, my stance on this is that we, we need to look at the, the storm drain, the water sewer for one of the, that's number, what line is that?
Twenty four.
Twenty four. So what we, what we discussed was Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School were the top schools that we thought would, would benefit because the fact that Magnolia has gotten some work done, Hodge, Murray and Valley, Valley Dell. And Azusa High School gets flooded, Gladstone Middle School gets flooded, this is a necessity. Therefore, that's why we, instead of doing the thirteen million, it's not a big ticket item, it's a four point five, which is two schools. And then the kitchen upgrades, the plumbing, Gladstone Middle School has not had an upgrade in their, you know, kitchen and the plumbing in so many years, and that goes hand in hand, right, with the sewer, the water and, and all that. So we just picked one school from the four schools there, which is two point three four million. The, um, the other ones that we agreed on, that the one that was a question was, I, you know, you guys, I, I did see that you guys, the baseball infield, outfield, baseball. But before we can get that going, I think it's really important that Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School gets an upgrade in their locker rooms. Those PE locker rooms are, are falling apart. Hearing from the PE teachers at both of those schools, you know, how, how can we provide better sports is by starting with the locker rooms. And so therefore, you know, both at Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School, they would both benefit, our athletes would benefit every single sport for them to have the locker rooms upgraded. We did agree on the other one, so I'm not gonna touch bases on that. On the community center, we, we definitely both agreed that that can actually wait for, it's a big, big ticket item. And the Sierra High School and Central Kitchen can, you know, that's one thing, and the pools, we agreed that that could be something that we can look at a later time. I, I was informed that we did reach out to LA County and Assembly Member and Senator and for, for, we applied for funding and we were actually not granted. But the budget within those offices, it's every year. So therefore, I, I, I would like to suggest that we, we apply every year and, and see if they could put us on, on their budget, because maybe one of those years, they'll go ahead and it benefits both, just not our schools, but our community. Right? And our middle schools and our, you know, our middle school, our elementaries where children can come and partake in those pools. And it would be a, a great community event, looking further, if we can get that funding. So definitely, the pool can, can definitely wait, but, but I, I, I stand, you know, firm in, in being able to, to, to get those water sewer storm drains in those two schools, Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School, the kitchen upgrades and plumbing for Gladstone Middle School, and the limited locker room upgrades for Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School.
Board President, if I may, I'm just gonna throw out a couple of suggestions that you, the board may, oh, I'm so sorry.
I, 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 I do see that we're at eight point five, but you know what, we, we did compromise, I, I did go high ball and I did want to spend a lot more, but I, I, you know, coming together here with Board Member Ramos, we're at sixteen point five with what we have, and that's exactly what you suggested, so. Sure, sure, for the record. And so, you know, with that being said, I, I'm sure that we can come together and I, I do agree that in six months, right, when we do sell, in a year when we do sell, we can go back to the drawing table and be able to do a lot more, definitely. Do, do we need a baseball field and outfield? Do, do, absolutely. I, I do agree with Board Member Benavides where curb appeal, I, absolutely, you know, there, there's, um, there's a lot more that we, we want to do, but what, given the, the belt, the, the limit of what we agreed on today, right? Um, I, I think we should spend the sixteen. Yes, now. But, sorry, Board Member Ramos.
I just want to, going back to what Vice President Benavides mentioned, you'd mentioned, and maybe I misunderstood you that, in what we've, what we've come up with, if you look at the green, it's all Azusa High School right now. There's no other school that's, that's included in there, so, you know, not that, if, I mean, if a school doesn't need something, then there's, we're not just gonna do a project there just so they, they don't feel left out, but if we, if we look at the, the, the two areas where we put funds into for the infrastructure, that does include other schools besides Azusa High School. And so that, that shows also that we're looking at all schools, not just Azusa. Um, and, uh, so that, that shows also that we're looking at all schools, not just Azusa High. And I know we are, but, you know, if, i- if you go back to that visual from, from, from the community, it, it'd be, well, everything's for Azusa High School, right?
I'm sorry, to, to just pick it back off, I, I, the reason that, um, it, it was those, Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School, uh, was a, a direction of, I, we did ask Latasha, which were the schools that needed the, the, the most of the storm drain, the water and the plumbing and so forth. And so that's why those, those schools, but yeah, it could be any of the schools, of the six schools, absolutely. Board member Greer?
Uh, if, am I correct, also based off of what, well, I have one question and then I have a, have a thought, but for, for you guys, when you were talking about kitchen upgrades and underground replacement, which schools were you identifying to, to have touched?
We actually just, so for the, it was Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School, and then also, that was for the first category on the stormwater, and again, that was based on.
Right, and then the second category?
Uh, Gladstone Middle School.
So just to be clear, so that means your projects just touched two schools?
Right.
Your projects would just touch Azusa High School and Gladstone, Gladstone Middle School? Um, I, uh, another, another thought to keep in mind, just even as we're looking at this list, because it's, there already is, it's, it's already tiered to an extent for us. And so if we look at the top, we have safety-related items total, and we have courtyard that's, that's, uh, listed there. Then we have strongly recommended items. Then, under that, it's upgrade slash add-on items total. So by, by moving down below, we are, we are bypassing, eh, with what you guys have recommended, we're actually bypassing a, a solid chunk of items that are listed under the strongly recommended in order to go down to the upgrade slash add-on, uh, add-on items. Um, so, so I think, so again, I, I would, I would, what I would point our eyes to is from a curb, from it, not only, uh, curb appeal aspect, but, but from the, the perspective of, of impact, that, that we can make a decision and get stuff, a number of projects, uh, going. Um, and it would be easier to, in, in the future, to start a s- smaller number of, of projects, especially bigger ticket items, when we have more money in, in our pockets, but by do, uh, by doing that, it, it is both addressing the strongly, the, the strongly recommend, the majority of the strongly recommended projects, except for the ones that we've all agreed, let's not touch yet, it would address all of the other ones. It would also, um, impact every school in the, the, the district to get those, uh, projects, uh, going. And I think one of the things that we battle, and I think we recognize all this as, as leaders and AUSD is, we have a lot of great stuff going on and yet we still battle a perception reality. That, that ends up being one of the, one of the things that, that we battle. And I think that, uh, this allows us to directly take steps at, at some of the perception and pride that I think we, we unfortunately, I don't think it's due, uh, based off of the good things that are going on. But, but to me, this, this takes a direct stab and, and, and kind of attack at that, uh, perception piece.
To, to, to your response, um, I, I do agree with you in that sense. Um, however, yes, all the schools do need that, when you're seeing the upgrade add-ons. But have you walked into the locker rooms at Azusa High? Have you walked into, uh, oh, 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 ha- ha- have you, has, your, your child is at Gladstone Middle School? I'm sorry, yes, Azusa High, right? It, in order for our sports to function, right, it, it, the reason that, well, for example, I'm speaking for myself, right? Why the locker room upgrades are, uh, some of them are a safety hazard. If, if you talk to any of the students that, right, that, that basically they can't open it, it, the locker's sticking out, right? They walk by, uh, i- it's, it's one of the things that, it, I, I would not classify that as an upgrade or, I mean, as an add-on, it would be a safety concern for me.
If I may, and I apologize for interjecting, but only because I'm already so with you that like my actual vote would say, let's include the lockers and increase our amount to fifteen-point-seven instead of fifteen-point-five. So, so I just don't want you to make an argument when I already agree with you. So, so I, I, I would actually be in favor of including the locker rooms and then, and, uh, and these other items that are, that, that are listed here and raising our budget from fifteen, uh, excuse me, from sixteen-five to sixteen-point-seven, and that would include the locker rooms. Would be an additional two-hundred thousand dollars, it would have been, it would include the locker rooms.
Because he was saying he was gonna fork it out, so.
The twenty-five, not the. Yeah, I just have a question, um, and, because this was, um, you know, when these lists started a few years ago, that was B.C. before Carlos. But, um, so what, who, or how did you come about to the categories of strongly recommended and upgrade add-ons? And the reason why I'm asking is because, to me, I mean, a pool is obviously an upgrade or an add-on, but, again, this infrastructure of partial underground replacement, the storm drain, the water, the sewer, and the kitchen upgrades, plumbing, to me, that, that's infrastructure is more important, if you, if we need to pick one, than for example, um, the baseball infield and outfield, right? And, um, people that work in the, in the schools, day in, day out, and, you know, my wife is a teacher, um, these are some of the things that, you know, they have to deal with on a day-in, day-out basis. And not only the teachers, but the students, the whole community of the schools, right? So, um, you know, to say that fixing the, the infrastructure of the water, the sewer, the storm drain and the plumbing is an upgrade or an add-on, I don't, again, I don't know how these categories were, were determined, but I would certainly not put those two items there under that category, so, for whatever that's worth.
So from, from my recollection, actually, we, um, who was, who's making the recommendation is our cabinet. It is not, it wasn't the board, we threw it out there and we said, hey, cabinet, could you look at what is a priority? Can we look at that, if, if, board, board member Greer, is that how you remember?
That is how I remember, but, but I would suspend speculation, I would just, I would just throw it over to staff and ask them.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the categories came about based off of what was needed at the time in twenty-twenty-two. And so the reason why the upgrade and add-ons, where you see partial underground utility, is because those schools weren't touched with the previous bond. Whereas you'll see Lee is not on here because we just did them under modernization, which was on prior commitments. So you have Dalton, you had Lee and Paramount that were part of the prior commitments, but all the other schools, their underground utilities were touched. And so add-on upgrade was, things have changed, we want to go to, uh, galvanized piping, all those things have changed, so that would be an upgrade now.
Does, does that, um, I, I wanna, so that I understand, like, these things have, have, um, like a life cycle. And then some of we've been talking about is, is regular, regular maintenance and upgrade. Is it, is it fair to say, and, and these also are not, um, the sensationalist projects, but they're, they are still needed? W- would we look at some of like, like plumbing and some of these things and say that things are not functioning, I, I, my mind goes back to Lee Elementary School, when, when we saw that there was like, what appeared to be, like, uh, it was unsafe drinking water level, and so those things needed to be addressed. Is, is that what we're seeing here with some of these things? Or is it more along the lines of these life cycles are running out? And so because these life cycles are running out, let's, let's get this on the schedule and make sure that they, that it, that it isn't pushed out too far. But can you, can you help give a sense of your estimation there?
Yes, so it's on the latter, so, for example, right now, um, our grounds department, they've been upgrading irrigation. Um, so one of the add-ons goals would be to get our irrigation all on one unit. We can control it through technology versus having to send five different guys out on five different areas of campus, because everyone has been like, I'm gonna use the word mom and pop shop, but we fix one portion, fix another, it is all working, but it's all on a different type of system. So the upgrade add-on would be having a universal system throughout the district, and we'll knock all those out.
So we're not looking at health and safety issues with the underground?
At this time, no, ma'am.
I know, I think about Lee's school too, and I know, I think, um, when that, when they excavated, then they ran into a surprise, right, because what was the additional cost on that?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number with me.
So, I mean, I just remembered because of the story, right? But, um, for me, I think if it's a health and safety issue, sort of like Lee, then yeah, you want to look at the infrastructure. But if it's something where we already have staff working at it and we could touch the smaller projects, build the momentum.
And in a year.
Yeah, me, and, and look at that, you know, look at the infrastructure then. Um, there was something else I was gonna say. Oh, uh, board member Ramos, when I was talking about touching every school, that wasn't this specific plan. I was kind of going back to our specific plan, because it does touch every, almost every school, I, I want to say. But, um, with that said, I, I, I also agree with board member Greer and President Ariana's that, yeah, and both, a- all of us, I think, agree on the limited locker room upgrades to Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School. And with our plan, and, and we're at six, fifteen-point-six, and if we add the locker room, we're at.
Sixteen-point-seven.
Sixteen-point-seven, so.
Well, I mean, I would say, we could, I would say no, because it's not on our final, unless, if, if, can we, can we agree to add two-hundred thousand dollars to the? If, if we were, if we were in favor of, of it being sixteen-seven, then I would say, yes, let's add, then let's add it.
May I interject just for a quick second? Um, can I assume that if we agree on the sixteen-point-seven, but that would be the plan that you have, right?
That could affect everyone else's, I, that, but, but I'm being, if I'm asked, can we add it on? I cannot responsibly say yes to that, because I don't have enough authority.
Yes.
To, to.
So something, something the board may consider, board president, um, just to, 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 to kind of push us along, um, I will offer some suggestions. Suggestion number one, you guys have a plan. You guys have a plan, we're eight million dollars away, so, pick four million, pick four million, and we're off to the races.
I, I'm sorry, real quick, um, just to, 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 because I, I want to answer to board member Benavides. Um, I, I think you're right, we, we all have a division of, hey, we want to, and, and all of us, right? That we want, we want the curb appeal, we want to better our schools. The, the thing with, um, let's just say, right, with, uh, the partial underground replacement water, sewer and storm drain on the two schools, which is Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School. Why, i- i- I, I feel it needs to go to, to, to one, one central area is because of the fact that all of the sports that are played on there, right? If we're doing Mickey Mouse here, Mickey Mouse there, it affects the fields that our students that, that play on. And so since we, we do have a SMAF and we do have, um, CIF, sports compared to the elementaries that don't have all the sports that are played on the campus, um, is why I, I would highly recommend to continue with the, uh, those two, uh, uh, schools, with Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School. And, and then when we do get the more money, you, you're correct, all the other schools do need to be addressed. But again, because of the sports that are played on the Azusa High Campus and Gladstone Middle School, we have other schools coming to our, our, our district, right, for, for games, for, um, what is it called? Uh, when all the schools come, um?
Tournaments.
Tournaments, thank you, you know, they're affected. And so that, that, that is the reason why I, I would, you know, encourage you guys to, to consider it.
But, but they're, I, I understand it's not, it's not ideal and it'd be great to upgrade the system, but it's fully functioning. So we're, we're saying, so when you're, when you're saying that, when you're saying, let's, let's make these changes so that there's, you know, these pieces when people are coming to our schools, but that's already happening. I, I fully agree that it would be ideal for us to, to, you know, have, have an upgrade to make it, to make it simpler to, to maintain, but it is car, it is currently already operational.
I- it would be a preventative, right? Because if you're on the field, or as a coach, when you're on the field and this field is flooded and that field is flooded, and we only have one field, but yet we have, you know, JV, we have, uh, what's that, fresh JV and varsity wanting to play, but we only have one field, that, then that becomes a problem. And, and that's my perspect, that's where I'm coming from, right? Yes, it is workable, but looking at it from, you know, that view of, yes, that field is flooded, that field is flooded, and this one's functional. But if we have it all in unisum, right, then, then we wouldn't have that problem. Good, uh, board member Ramos.
Ms. Latasha, would you be able to give us maybe a little bit more insight on any of those schools? So let's go with the partial underground replacement, right? Uh, because we're, we're going back and forth on, well, they don't need to be, nothing needs to be replaced right now, it's more preventative, it's operational. But is that really the case? I mean, is there a couple of these schools that we've kind of, you know, kind of rigged some stuff? And yeah, it's operational, but it's like, hey, yeah, my car's running, but I have duct tape over something and you, nobody knows what's under the hood, but it's running, right? But in reality, it's, this thing's gonna blow up, right? So is there any scenarios similar to that where, where, yeah, maybe not all six of the schools that are listed need that upgrade right now, because it's, it is operational, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But are there some that we, they've been, you know, having some issues with, with any of these categories that are in the water, the sewer, the storm drain, that, yeah, let's, you know, before it becomes a bigger problem, a bigger expense, we can, we can be proactive there and change it all, and then we have, you know, the, the system replaced.
So I would say, um, if we were looking at things that are currently pressing, um, that they are working, but if we're saying currently pressing, it would be the storm drain. So when we do have heavy rains, um, some of our storm drains pushes the waters out, so then you'll see students that's walking in an underpass with their umbrellas or it's making puddles. So I think we, we do experience some of those, um, that's primarily at Azusa High School, um, right now, especially on the main campus. Um, but as far as the underground utilities, I do, I do not think we're at the place where, right now, things are broken and it's impacting us. The underground utility portion, I think, would be giving us, bringing us up to galvanized piping, upgrading the systems, making it more efficient, um, allowing us to utilize resources other ways when it comes down to that. Um, as far as the water, the sewer, I think those all, um, go into the park of, it all's working, but it's the storm drains that I would say, right now, if we were walking on the campus and it was raining, that's what I think would be in all of our viewpoint to say, okay, we have gushing water coming out because of the heavy rain, because of our, our storm drains.
Thank you.
Going on what board, uh, board member, a superintendent said, okay, so we're at eight right now, right? So we could do four-point-something, four-point-something, and we can agree on something, right? I- is that what you said, can you please rate your, what, what you shared?
Sure, one recommendation could be, since, since you are in sync and you are in sync, you know what? You're gonna decide on four million, you're gonna decide on four million, we're gonna put them on the sheet, and we're done for the night. That, that would be one recommendation, another recommendation would be, um, maybe going through item. And now we're not partners anymore, we're gonna go through item. Uh, GMS mural, yes, 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 no, all right, that one gets on there, that, that would be another recommendation. Um, and then, of course, we can just continue kind of talking about it, trying to convince ourselves, and then kind of maybe go item by item and try to, to lock these into the, into the sheet.
I can't, si- since we, we'll, I can't, I can't see, because I don't have.
Wanna make it larger?
Um, just because, uh, right, for, for, I, I would like to see i- if you guys are okay with this, like what we have, right, on one, one column, and then what you guys have in one column, to see, would, would you guys be okay with that?
Yeah, I think that, that would be helpful.
That'd be good, I thought about that earlier.
Yeah, so we could, we, we could visually see it, okay?
I do have a question for, for Ms. Jamal. Latasha, can you explain what partial, um, underground, partial meaning what schools?
She's explaining and she's adding columns.
Let's give her, is it okay we give her a little bit of time?
No, no, so I can, I, oh, nevermind.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you a little bit.
If we can go and order, um, so I can start with group one, if you can let me know, do you have this first one? Group one, you have the forty-seven?
Y- yes.
Okay. And jumping down here, did you have the baseball?
We have all of those items.
Okay, you got it. But I just did this, no, no, formula. Alrighty, and when we move down here?
No. No.
Marquee?
Yes.
Alrighty.
Uh, yes, for the next two.
You got it.
And would love additional two-hundred thousand dollars to do the last one, but at present, because we don't have that, then that is a no.
Or would it be more beneficial to just do the subtotal of the?
Oh, the remaining? You got it.
Or ju- just move all the, all the numbers over and then just do it sum of the whole column?
Okay, if I can do group two? Do you have the?
Do you have the GMS mural? Anything in the baseball sport? You you are correct. Thank you so much, sir. Um, so we'll go here?
Yes.
How much do we have here?
Four point five.
Okay, so two sites? Okay.
Yes, one site.
One site? Okay.
No.
Okay.
No. No.
That's it.
Yes.
And the full amount?
Yes.
Wait, they they also had that, we, oh, no, we haven't agreed.
No. We want to give it to them with two hundred thousand, but they don't want it. Say, say yes, and we can throw it on there.
Alrighty, so we have, uh, group one, their total is six point six million. And group two, total is seven point nine million. Oh, I got you. Just two seconds. And to, oh. I was gonna give her the explanation.
Oh, I don't have the one, that's why. Um, can I, ju- can you provide one other data point, if you even have this? I know one, it sounded like you said that other stuff would be good to replace, but it's not, it's not critical need, it's not that it's not working. You said if there was one area, you said it would be storm drains at Azusa High School. I know that we broke down all of that project for, like, per site. Do you have a sense of what just of the storm drains at Azusa High School would be?
I do not. I would be guessing.
Okay, but it would be less than the two point, it would be less than, less than two point three million. And the reason why I ask is because if what we're hearing from from staff is, yes, uh, these things would be good to do them now, but they can wait. But there is critical need for for storm drains at Azusa High School. If if we take that and then say, you know, then what is that amount, prioritize, prioritize that. Um, again, it still allows us to to, then we've taken care of all of the critical needs and now we're touching the rest of the schools. And the other things can, the other things can still wait.
Thought, um. The fact that, yes, some things can wait, and I think that's what we're trying to, you know, collaborate and compromise on. But when it comes to, you know, again, to to the water, the sewer, the storm drain. I I think the plumbing, the kitchen upgrades, right, feeding our children, it it. Gladstone Middle School hasn't, has has not had an upgrade in that kitchen for for quite a while. Um, right, it it's, it's the need, I, I, I will still, I I'm willing to compromise on on four point million. Right? Absolutely. How do we compromise? How would you like to compromise, right? So, Latasha, I have a question for you. So you're saying it's, it's not a dire need, however, but it's, it's, you said it's like Mickey Mouse here and Mickey Mouse there, correct?
Yes, but I want to make sure when we're saying Mickey Mouse is working, though, meaning it's just Mickey Mouse in a frame of. One may be from Jorge Ronquillo store, the other may be from Latasha Jamal, different type of, uh, branding types, working together. All do the function, but a dream would be, everything's on one system. You can maximize technology and other resources that way.
Control it remotely and nobody has to go over there. Which impacts staff, but not students.
Yes.
These other projects impact.
For the board, does storm drain include, I'm just, I'm I'm not, I, when you said the visual, I'm not sure. Are you talking about, like, when it rains, it's super flooded and the water's not leaving? That's, that's something different.
That's something different. I'm talking when you're walking and you know you have the gutters.
Yes.
That's supposed to catch. Some of ours, we do not have the gutters, and so when the water comes in, it just shoots straight out.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But we, but we, I mean, to be fair, for the board, we do have a flooding problem as well.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. And that would be irrigation, that comes from through irrigation.
So all of that is connected, is what you're saying, Latasha, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so I, I, being able to look at it from a perspective of, yes, it's working right now. But we're gonna kind of do other things and so it, I, I. I really feel, right, and I really do believe that because it's all connected. And just kind of like what Latasha just described, that the, um, you know, storm drains just shoot straight out, right? I I have a son at Azusa High School. I have a, not because I want the, but the students, right? I do have other kids at, uh, I did have other kids at other elementaries. But I have a question for you. How many times do you have to send out crews to go ahead and take care of that? MOT, right, we we we, we are with, we hire within, right? So we do the projects within.
Correct. So if we're talking rain specifically from the storm drains, we don't send out a crew with that. That is just the students have to actually navigate and just do not walk underneath it.
So.
Right, but but I'm so, because what happens, like, we we'll talk about something. So with the storm, I'm, we're saying, like, where do we, where do we compromise? I think hearing Mr. Maul share and talk about how storm drains is a critical need and that the other things would be nice. And it, and it directly impacts staff, but it does not have a, necessarily have a direct impact on students. It would be helpful for a, for a future upgrade. Um, I hear storm drains and 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 to me, a good reason has been, has been communicated as to why we would prioritize stor- storm drains. I'm thinking about, like, in your, in one's own home, if you were to say, it would be good to upgrade to galvanize pipes. But I still have a number of years left in these pipes that I have now, so so I could, uh, uh, so I could replace it now. But I have life, I have life lessons, so so it's, it's good to do it into the future and so we can plan it in for a future project. It would be different if what we were saying is our pipes are compromised. If our pipes are compromised, then yes, let's replace our compromised pipes. That's not what what we're saying. It, with the exception of the storm drain, I'm hearing that the storm drain at Azusa High School, and I know you don't have that information, but I would be curious to know. What is that item? Is it a million dollars? Is it five hundred thousand dollars? Is it two hundred thousand dollars? Because if the, depending upon what that amount is and we determine what that amount is, if we address that, we will then have addressed all of the critical needs. And I mean, we, so, because I feel like we're, 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 I don't want to make up a scenario that's not there. Yes, these things need to be addressed, but I'm looking at what is in strongly recommended, and we have all these items in strongly recommended. And the, the infrastructure things need to be done, but our, our, what we're receiving and hearing is, it, there is not a critical need for that to happen right now. If that waited a year, it would not have, the the impact would be on our staff, that that's having to deal with. Uh, uh, two different controllers or or four different brands of controllers that all work. As opposed to making it easier for staff to only have one. I would rather delay that and and put the burden on us as the, as the adults that are here in the, in the district to deal with that for, for a year. If it's still functional for our students, then to, uh, delay this impact for our students and and our community.
Board Member Benavides.
Uh, Latasha, that's what I was asking about partial, what, what, can you clarify that? Like, partial, is that specific to one school, two, three, and what does that mean?
So no, that would be, um, partial underground replacement for, um, upgrading water, sewer and storm drain. For Azusa High School, Gladstone, Hodge, Magnolia, Murray and Valleydale.
So partial doesn't mean like?
It would not be the entire campus. Um, we would not be digging up the entire campus to do underground utilities. It would just be addressing the needs for each campus.
For the campus?
Yes.
Okay.
But only for those that are listed, yes.
So. So I'm willing to to compromise, right, to to be able to come to an agreement tonight. And, um, continue with the Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School for the four point five million. And that's, and be able to remove the kitchen upgrades and plumbing for Gladstone Middle School, the two point three four million. And then, I don't know, and then take it from there. You said four million, I, 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 I'm still going to push for that partial underground, right? Because how can we have, uh, a new, you know, press box for football, stadium lights, restrooms, athletics? We're adding restrooms, a scoreboard, right, we're, we're having people to come, um, I I just, I. Having that many people on campus, right, having our football, uh. Our football games, which is a vision that we've had for so many years, right? I I I can't foresee having that or even a softball, right, to redo the softball area. Without doing the partial underground replacement. And so I I'm, I'm willing to compromise to be able to just do the Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School and keep that four point two and then remove the two point three four.
And the one point one, Board President?
I'm sorry.
And the one point one? Oh, at the bottom.
No, that, 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 that locker room need needs, needs upgrade. Uh, both Azusa High School and, so, I mean, maybe we do just Azusa High, you know? Um, and then it will be like a two point something, but if you said four, right, four, four million, right? We we can do those two, have something that you guys want to do and then actually then, you know, bring everything else in into perspective.
The, the only, the only problem I have with that, with with this style of negotiation is, it's arbitrary. This is, this is, this is arbitrary and it's, and it's, and it's kind of like, we're, we're kind of saying four point four million. And because it's a number and because it's half of what we're saying, but it's not based on like, um, it's, it's, I don't know, it's not based on what, what are we actually facing and looking at? It's not database, it's like feeling based. And so I'm wanting, so again, we, because even when we say, how about this, we compromise, let's just do Azusa High School and Gladstone, uh, Middle School. It still doesn't change the fact that at present, we don't, we don't need to upgrade those, those, uh, we don't, they don't need to be replaced. At present, they will need to be replaced. We're, we're not even anticipating that they're going to break between now and the end of next year. It's just that it it is something that we need to have on our, on our radar and upgrade. I don't under, for me, um, if if what we're hearing is storm drains is what is needing to happen. I don't know why we're saying, okay, let's compromise and and replace these other items that are not needing to be replaced now or in the next year.
I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, the foundation, right? So we're looking to add, we're looking to add restroom athletics, right? That we're looking to add the stadium lights. And so whether it's, you know, whether it's, it's baseball or whether it's football, right? We're, we're, we're looking to add, right? And yes, it may not be broken right now. However, it is so important to lay down the foundation as not a quick, right? We don't know if it's a quicksand, because we don't know. It's been patched here, it's been patched there. Therefore, we lay down, um, Ms. Latasha, what it, what is that plumbing, plumbing called again, the, the pipe, the, I forgot?
Galvanized pipe?
Galvanized, right? If we lay down that foundation and it's wrong, whether we go with baseball or whether we go with football. I I still strongly believe that it's very important to do the water sewer and storm drain. It it goes hand in hand. And I I hear what you're saying, right? Whether we do all baseball and we don't do any of the football, we still need that because we're adding restrooms. We're adding more.
But your, your assumption is we're adding restrooms and so therefore we need to upgrade our, our underground piping because we're doing restrooms. And so the assumption, it sounds like, is not that what we have right now can handle the, can handle the restrooms. And if, and if in a year we upgrade, so it's based, it's based on an assumption that's, that, that isn't, that isn't here and 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 present. Um, and so I would, I'm, I I I have a hard time wrapping my mind around replacing something that you still have more life. It's like I can get my, I have another two months before I need to get my oil changed, but I'm gonna do it today. Just in case, but now I'm missing out on the lifespan. I have more life left in in what I, so why would I replace it now?
So, so just to answer, and then you you can, so for example, right, you got, you, I I'm gonna lay it out like this. So. I I'm gonna give you an example. So there's, there's a, someone that goes to the dentist, right? You go to the dentist, you see the X-ray and, you know, the dentist says, you know, right here, there, you're losing some bone. But you still have some bone. You may have a couple of years, but depending on how it's used, right? It it, it can be, it could be like this next six months or it could be in two years, right? However, the recommendation of the dentist is gonna say, okay, this is what, you know, this is what we need to do to be preventative, right? And so that is it. It it's, it's not whether we do it now, whether, but my thing is that. In order for us to build, we should lay down the foundation. That is it. Preventative.
And if I, looking at, looking at your, I think that's a really helpful analogy. And so based off of the analogy that you just gave right now, where you said, and if the dentist said that, that, you know, made this recommendation. Um, that is the reason why when we're asking Mr. Maul, what is the, what, what, what are the things that she's saying? And 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 what she said was storm drains at Azusa High School. So now what we're looking at is, the dentist is not recommending all these other things. The dentist is, you know, we, in the strongly recommended category is up, is up above. And 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 the storm drains that we now move up to to strongly recommend, recommended. And these are other things that the dentist is saying can wait, and we're saying we'd rather have those things now.
So, so quick question. Sorry, ti- ti- Ms. Latasha, so if we just replace the storm dr- drain, don't, don't, you know, do the, the sewers or 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 the water. Right? And adding all these other things that we're gonna add on the fields, right? What is the potential of us eventually having to add? And I'm giving this scenario before you answer, kind of like, you know, when we as the board. We decided to spend five point five million dollars on what it was the fields on Gladstone and Azusa High. And we were not, we had not closed the schools, right? And I, and again, we, we did it because it was a curb appeal, it was something, but it was like, hold on, can we hold off on this? And which, 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 what you're saying is to hold off, right? You're saying to hold off on on this.
For six months.
For six months. So realistically, right, if we start the other projects and not do this in the next six months. What is the probability of there be a water, you know, leakage, sewer, right? Um, with the bathrooms being used more, the storm drains, I mean, can you give us a realistic approach?
So I, I do not believe that anything that we'll add on is gonna increase us having additional issues. So if we, construction with, uh, for a new restroom will include the proper plumbing. DSA will require the proper sewage for that project. So it wouldn't be that we would add a restroom on top of what's existing. They would actually have to put in the proper sewage and everything for a restroom and that's part of the construction cost. So that would be separate from the partial underground utility. So I do not think that if we were to, speaking of the restroom, add that, that that's, I mean, we're gonna have additional issues because that was added on.
Okay, okay, thanks. Um, Board Member, do you want to go next? Okay, let's then go. Board Member Benavides and then Board Member Ramos.
So, one of the things that, just in hearing the conversation, it triggered my memory back to when I was working in redevelopment. And one of the things that happens is when a developer comes in and buys underutilized property or vacant land. They come in and they propose a housing project, right, similar to what they're proposing on our surplus properties. So what happens is there's an impact, that means that they look at the, you know, infrastructure. To see if it's gonna be able to withstand all the new housing that's coming in because of the toilets, the water usage. Um, wh- e- e- everything, right? It's, they, they look at that, it's all environmental. So being and hearing Ms. Jamal saying that, it, we're not, I mean, we're at, we're at full capacity right now and it's working, right? We're not adding, we're not anticipating five thousand more students coming into Azusa or another one thousand students coming in.
That's a dream.
In the next year. So I just kind of wanted to shed light on that. That's kind of where my mindset goes. Um, so I, I think for me, i- i- it's a hard sell to look at the infrastructure if we don't need it. But I don't know, what, what is the cost of the storm drain? I I don't know, right?
I would have to get that.
Yeah.
Board Member Ramos and then Board Member Greer.
Yeah, so I just have one comment or, um, to use, uh, Board Member Greer's, uh, analogy of it's, it's. No, the analogy of it's, it's operational, why, you know, like that, right? But then if I look at, again, whoever these were categorized, if I look at the baseball infield and outfield, so those are not operational? Or are they or aren't they? I mean, that's, that's kind of a question.
And my, but my, my response to that would be, in both of these cases, they're operational, so how do we now look at impact? So, so if it's, if they're both operational, but this one is going to impact our students. The other one isn't going to, it's, it won't have the impact on on quality of life for our students. It will, it it would certainly, from what I'm hearing, have, uh, quality of life impact on our staff. And I certainly don't want to make it harder for our staff, but if I had to choose between making decisions that is going to, uh, significantly increase quality of life for students. Or staff, I, I, and and when we're looking at like six month difference of of time, I would choose, I would prioritize students over, over staff. I I and and when we're looking at like six month difference of of time, I would choose, I would prioritize students over over staff.
So, based on what I know of deferred maintenance in all of our facilities throughout the years. Um, there could be an issue with with any of these areas with underground replacement of the water, the sewer, the storm drain, et cetera, right? Um, and again, we already mentioned that in six months, all this can be taken care of. So, looking at it from a facilities perspective, you know, this is me, if I had to choose one or the other, um. There there is, I think I think there's a higher risk of something happening with uh infrastructure, um you know, pipes and. Everything that's been there for many years that hasn't been addressed. It's for it's working right now, but you know, sometimes we get in our car, it's working, then all of a sudden we get a flat tire, right, then it then it isn't. Or something's wrong with the engine or what have you, but. As opposed to the, you know, the infield outfield of the baseball field or any of the those other items that are above. Um, I I think that it's a. I I would address the other part of the infrastructure, knowing that in six months, we're gonna be able to address that second part of it. Which is the items that are above on the, you know, the category of strongly recommended. So that's kinda where where I'm coming from on that, because the infrastructure, we say it works, but we don't know what we don't know, right? In a baseball field, we can see what's wrong with it more easily or and and I and I get the impact on the students. But if pipes break or we have a serious problem with underground, it's gonna affect everybody. I mean, usually, you know, like in Lee School as another example, right, we we we've come back to Lee School several times. And all the infrastructure, the issues that that they have there, so anyways, I'll get off my soapbox.
I I would, um, I'm sure all of you guys have heard a happy wife, happy life. I understand what, you know, uh I you wanna make the impact on the students. But just like in a marriage, how can you make an impact on your children when your wife is not taken care of? A- a- and I'm saying that, you know, bluntly, like, we need to take care of our staff to make sure that they can take care of our students. And, yes, in six months, you're right, we we will get some more money. And in six months, we can get the extra things that we have highlighted here on, you know, on either column. But I think it's important that we, you know, that I I feel very strongly that. In order for our district and our students to be highly impacted, we have to some way somehow. Let our staff, like you said, I don't wanna make it, I I do wanna make it easier for our for our staff, for MOT, for the district. So, you know, with that being said, um, I I I would like to to wait on the baseball. Uh lighting for tennis courts and all that for in another six months.
I I I think, um, if just just responded that I. I I I hear the 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 perspective that you're saying, but like a marriage or whatever. But it's not, it's a it 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 is, it's a staff and 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 we as adults work at a school district, I I wonder. And I and I don't know, I'm 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 speculating, if we were to ask our uh the the our MOT staff. If if they were in here and we were to say to them, hey, staff, we can, um, I know that. I know that there's five different types of controllers that you guys have had to go back and forth on the on the uh to the different school campuses. In order to get our irrigation systems going or whatever, and and that that is an added impact on on. It would be a lot easier if it was, if if there was one controller that you could control remotely or or something, let's say. Um, so but staff, we're curious to know from you, would you, would you prioritize, look, look at these things? Um, the new baseball and softball fields. Um dugout upgrades, turf and and sports lighting for t- for tennis courts. And uh branding and mural for G, if if we were to ask them and and delay your, um, I I I I, again, I'm speculating, but I. I I wonder even there if our staff would say, um, we'll we'll take the. We'd we'd rather upgrade the the irrigation systems to make it easier for for us and delay it for the students, or if they would say it the other way around.
Yeah, so I would take that one step further, you know, because you're referring to only the district staff that handles the maintenance and the. The um repairs, et cetera, but if you take it one step further to the actual staff, the teachers and the support staff at the schools. And that's the same question, I I'd be curious to see what they would um prioritize, given a couple factors, the history. That's, you know, with maintenance in all these schools and the fact that, you know, we we talk about six months, but in a couple of months, we could jump to the next. Projects because we're saying six months because that's, you know, we're we're being conservative, but it could be in two months, we could say now we could add. All this other, all these other items that are the baseball field and all that, but I I would be willing to say that if we took. Um, staff from the district and from the actual sites and say, look, these are some of the items that we have, um, that they would. Uh I would tend to say that some of them would agree that or prioritize the items on the bottom here as opposed to the items on top with the baseball field.
Board Member Benavides.
I have a question, so we we all agree on the Azusa High School courtyard, right? That's an item up there, so what impact does if? So let's say we don't do the storm drains, because I think we're only talking about, you said you were willing to just do the Azusa High School storm drains, is that right?
What the suggestion, just to clarify, the suggestion that um was was given by Arturo. Our superintendent was, okay, you guys agree on eight million, so what's needed is uh four and four, right? And so we we can compromise, okay, so well, it's four point five to do Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School, right? And that's point five more, and we can take something that you guys want for four something, and then. I I heard Board Member Greer say, you know what, now that we're just point, you know, two point five away, like, let's increase it to. We have that flexibility, absolutely, right, we can totally do that right now.
Right.
Absolutely.
So what I'm saying is, so if we do the Azusa High School courtyard and we do the. We, you know, we, let's say we come to an agreement on the Azusa High School storm drains. Right, how will that resolve some of their concerns with respect to the courtyard? Is there any impact on the courtyard at the storm drains?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, so, when I hear you say or your your team say that. On the upgrades for the infrastructures, what schools would you wanna see upgraded? With respect to the infrastructure, is it only Azusa High School, just for clarifying?
Yeah, so we we asked the question uh to Ms. Natasha on what, out of those six schools, because it's not the full thirteen point five million. And those are the two schools that she recommended, if I'm if I remember that correctly, that was a couple hours ago, but. Um, that those would be the two schools, right, that would give priority to in that category.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Azusa High School and.
Just for my, when you say storm drain, are you talking about, you're you're talking about the the gutters?
The gutters that go from the roof and then some of them lead down to make the water go down to the ground. So like if you're on the west campus and if you're by the auto shop, the for Azusa High School, the drainage, the.
Those gutters are not there.
Gutters are missing and it just comes. Yes, and some of them are missing the pipe to make the water funnel down.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure, just for for my sake, when you're saying, in the priority, the the storm drain. You're, that's what you're talking about, you're talking about the gutters that drain the water from the roof.
Yes, sir.
It comes down, it hits the gutter, it gets tracked, there's a pole that comes down, typically down the wall or whatever, and then now the water is running.
Yes, sir.
That that's actually an issue, I mean, when you, I thought that that's given me, now I'm countering your counter to my counter to your counter. Or remember Ramos, um, when you were talking about, we're we're talking about like taking it to school sites, re- realizing that what we're. What y'all, you you both are are proposing is um for the partial underground replacement, that that would really only touch Gladstone and. And Azusa, I mean, effectively, so, uh it makes me wonder. Because we can, we can zoom in a bit more, if we were to go to Azusa High, um, li- for the sake of argument, can we add storm drains? Since what we're hearing is the the dentist is recommending that's that storm drains beyond, so so. Finding a way to add storm drains on would seem wise to me based based off of that, so let's say that storm drains are included. Then if we were to go and say, um, school community, our our underground is is fully functioning. It's fully fully functioning, we can replace it now, or we could, we could do these upgrades. If we replace it, it doesn't, it again, it doesn't impact, it has it has no impact on quality of life. Um, but but this, but this does, right, and and correct, there's no impact on quality of life. And we don't have any reason to believe that there will be an impact on quality of life, whether we do it now or whether we do it in a a year or two years from now. But with these ones, it would impact quality of life immediately.
Let me just interject something.
Sure.
So if it wouldn't have a qual- uh impact on quality of life or on the situation, why would we, why is it even on this list?
It's on the upgrade add-on. Because because the recommendation is to upgrade it so that it can be uh preventive, so so again, it is something that will need to happen, but it wouldn't. But it is, but water, water is flowing through those those pipes, they just.
Why not wait till it just bursts and then we react to it?
Right, so if we were looking at ten years down the line, I think that'd be one thing, but if we're looking at uh six months, a year. It it um it doesn't appear that there's a, there's a criti- that can be assessed, that it how much life is left and it it appears that. There's enough life to get us through um the this this next, the recommendation is the the is that there's enough life left to get us through this next year too.
Uh again, again, I think I'm I'm gonna go back to to, I really like, right, and one of the things that you had said, uh Board Member Greer is like. Well, wh- why are we going back and forth and why do you have to do four million, well, w- w- it's a democracy, we're literally just, you know. We're just collaborating and making a decision on what, you know, what to move forward for today, right? The recommendation again, Arturo said, hey, four, you know, four, and so. I I'm I'm willing to put on the table the four point five, right, remove the two point three four, and then you guys can do four, four point five, right, as well. And then we can increase to to go ahead and 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 agree to that, and that way we can decide on that for today, right? You're not understanding. So four point five, right, so four point five is uh line number twenty-four, right? Do the water, the sewer, the storm drain, right, because it 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 all goes together and just do the two schools, which is four point five. Right, and then you guys pick something from what you guys decided and do port for four point five. Because we agree on the eight point, um, eight point, uh, what much was it?
Eight point five eight five.
Eight point five eight five, right, so in order, you know, for us to be able to move this forward, I'm proposing that. Four point five, correct, and that, you know what, we'll pick up to four point five and we can remove um the two point three four on line. Twenty-five, so then that way, you know, four point five, and then that way, we can go ahead and increase it to whatever that total is. Um, could could you figure that out for us?
Yeah, so right now, if I added the four point four, we're at thirteen million, and then if Group A would like to tell me.
If you, if let's just, can you just write in there for for a half million, just for, in in any random line, just so we can see what the total is?
A half a million?
Can can you just just write in there four four point five million, just to see the total?
Seventeen point five eight one.
We we're we're right there, we're at the, we're at the ballpark.
Uh, okay, let me.
That would be enough for sure to cover everything that is strongly recommended, and you would still have something left. Yes, then the one point one is not in there for the locker room upgrades.
I mean, they can add it.
Would be line number twenty-five that we would remove, yes.
And and twenty-eight.
No.
I'm sorry, and twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is not.
We 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 agreed on on that.
We've not yet, no.
Oh, we haven't, okay.
Correct.
So essentially, you guys will only have to give up. One point, one, one, one million eighty-one thousand.
That number isn't computing for me, but I hear you.
You want me to plug in each one individually?
Seventeen five eight one.
Yeah.
Based on what we removed.
Yeah.
So if you guys removed a million eighty-one, so we gave you a break, half that what we need to do, see how we're working with you?
What do you mean a million eighty-one?
If you.
Yes, and so right now, um, I've highlighted, I included everything from rows thirteen to eighteen. Um, and so there's still, that's only taking us to fifteen point four million, and so that would be up to. Um, Board Member Greer and Boardman uh Vice President Benavides to get us up to the sixteen point five.
Right, so let them.
I'm, I I don't, I don't quite understand, but let to play with the numbers, can can you put things in but leave off digital marquee? And see what those numbers are?
One more time, I'm sorry?
Can you include all of our items, but but let let's say that we suspended the digital marquee?
It's gonna take you over, because you also have two point four million synthetic grass.
So it's, so it's not one, what did you say, what number you thought we would would needed to cut by?
A million.
We 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 didn't agree on the synthetic grass.
So it's a million three fifty-one then, is that correct? To bring it down to sixteen point five million?
Right, we we didn't agree on the synthetic grass.
No, but they're they're.
Oh, they're adding it, got it, gotcha, okay.
We already did our.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, right now, based on what Board President said. The board would unilaterally, unilaterally be going from sixteen point five million to seventeen point five. Because four point five, they would be putting four point five and you would be pointing four point five, so that adds a million to the pot.
So maybe I, so maybe I'm where I'm lost, it's something that you, about you said something, we just have to cut one point one million or something.
Yeah, earlier when she had put it up, the total was seventeen million eighty-one thousand. That was based after we took out our two point three four million. And I believe she had put, included all of your baseball items, is that correct?
Yes, right now, all the baseball, so like right now, if I take out the synthetic grass, we will still need a million dollars plotted.
So what we're saying, uh, is that you guys can pick other items to come up to the total of.
Well, actually, it'll be more, because.
Just the math, I think the 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 arithmetic may be off from what from what you're suggesting.
I'm just going by what I'm seeing up there, but is there?
Again, in that scenario, you guys will be putting four point five million dollars on the board. And they would be putting three point five million dollars on the board.
So we need to add a million.
Right, right, no, so so.
Correct. So that's that's what I'm saying.
So what I'm suggesting is that they put the four point five and we agreed to raise what we decided on. Because, I mean, so that way, it's it's, you know, it's important that you guys. That we all feel like, okay, you know what, I'm willing to compromise this, and I and if we can go ahead and raise it to the one point five, right, that is needed. Absolutely.
For me, it's and I hear, it's less about compromise, it's more about like, what's what's best for our our, like, our our students, and I know that we we disagree on that. Here here's maybe a crazy thought, there's here's, here's a crazy thought. What if we just add, don't don't look at me, Mr. Maul, don't look at me. What if we just add four point five million to the sixteen that we talked about? If we add the four point five million, then we can do all of the things that we've talked about, and we can do all, and we can do the two, the two schools that you talked about. And now everything, you're saying now, and and two hundred thousand more to cover the, plus two hundred thousand to cover the locker rooms.
Yeah, uh, so I just wanna, just to be uber clear, I want uh Board Member Greer saying. Cause I I wanna, I want this team to hear it specifically. I was just pu- put it a different way.
Yeah.
We're gonna do everything that that team said we're gonna do, right? So everything that they said we we wanna do, we're gonna do that, and we're gonna do the four point five million dollars.
Correct.
Right. The the one item that i- is getting lost right now, I I just wanna be uber clear about it. We can do that, I don't know if you wanna do that for for what that amount's gonna be, is line item twenty-nine. I just wanna make sure that that line item is not in there right now.
But it never has been.
Correct.
Right.
I I just wanna make sure that 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 was, that doesn't be understood.
But I would actually like to challenge us also again, and add that line, again, bringing us, i- if you're willing to raise four million, I mean.
Sure, yeah, let's plug numbers in, let's see, let's let's see what the numbers would be, if we went, if we did the, go ahead and add the locker rooms and while we are at it. The the branding, the forty-seven branding mural GMS up at up top.
Twenty-one million dollars.
So that that raid that we are then raid, so that's where I said, then we add the four point five, so so it's raising.
Five point five million.
It raises by five, five point five million dollars.
And it would still be.
It's raising it by four point three, because we are at sixteen point five, so it's four point three.
Right, right. So I would. The short version, I would be in favor of this.
Which, with that number, the twenty.
With twenty, with twenty-one.
Can you gray, can you gray out twenty-five, just so we're on the same page? So basic. So basically, the only things that will not get done are line item.
For now.
For now, are line item six, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, and twenty-six.
Partial twenty-four.
Partial twenty-four, you are correct, you are correct.
How about the 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 twenty and the twenty, uh, I'm sorry, which one was it, the nineteen and twenty?
Those are no's for now.
No, it's for now, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I would be okay with this.
Yeah, because we talked about maybe going out to to the county and get funds for it.
Absolutely, yes. I I think we're, I think we're all in favor. He he wants to go home to Tamale, so.
And not to mention, board member Ramos is covering everything above, uh, sixteen five.
That's that's off the table now, we were at twenty-five thousand, so I tried to help, but you guys didn't accept it, so, you know. It's a one-time offer, Mr. Greer, so.
I have a question as, um, and this is, I guess, for Ms. Latasha and Cabinet, um, for for the pool, right? I I would highly recommend to to just apply again, and see, you know, we already have the structure since we already applied one time, and just apply every budget, see, every season before they decide on a budget, and maybe we'll get lucky and and take it from there on the pool side, because I would really, I I really believe that our students, we can have a great swim team at Gladstone Middle School and a great swim team at Azusa High, and if we can build that, right, we can dream it, we can build it partnership with a uh Ms. Hilda Salis, right, with Catherine Berger, because she's part of Gladstone Middle School, and that is her area. I'm not sure if it's, if the lines have been drawn, but even Assembly Member Susan Rubio and Assembly, and I'm sorry, Assembly Member Blanca Rubio and Senator Su- Susan Rubio, right, if they can keep partnering up with Azusa Unified, and the Azusa City would benefit not only Azusa Unified, but also our community, so I would highly recommend that, um, board, do you, would you guys be okay with that?
Yeah.
Good.
I think we have reached a consensus.
It was, it was fun doing battle with you.
I I actually, you know what, this actually was very beneficial, um, I'm I'm going to be moving back over, oh, I could just stay here, right? Um, I, going back to before we jumped into this, um, I I wanted to, um, to just, uh, I guess, clear, um, right, the 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 board direction, so are we going to direct our cabinet to bring it back at ev- every two board meetings, like every other month? Did we want to have, right, and that's the thing, I said, um, I had asked you, Adrian, you know, and a board member, sorry, Ed Greer and board member Benavides and board member Ramos, would you guys like to have another study session in six months, right? We can go ahead and add that, um, you just want to have it every other month that they report to us, what would you guys like to do? What are your thoughts, board member Ramos?
I I would like to have it every month, and so now that we made a decision and we have, you know, the direction of the the, not only the funds, but how they're going to be spent. Um, in two months, we can meet again and get an update on the progress, right? And then based on that, we can, you know, pivot to something different if we need to, or if not, okay, now, and and then by that time, we might have some other information on some of the 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 status of the properties and what, so can now we get another, you know, a hundred million and whatever, and 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 keep the ball rolling that way, right?
Just for clarification, you said we meet, so so would it be at a uh study session like this for a couple hours, or you would like to have it on the board agenda?
I would say it'd be a study session, I don't, again, it might not even be two hours, you might have everything flowing great, and um, we just kind of get an update and.
So here's study session, board member Greer.
My, oh yeah, my my suggestion, and and please, staff, if anything I'm saying is based on a faulty assumption, then then correct me. But but based off of what I've heard from you all, I think about how monthly you have provided, every every single meeting, you provide an update on um each of our surplus properties, and there have been some months where the answer is, there's nothing to update. Um, in a similar, if 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 my assumption is correct, that you were to say, all right, we're looking at this list, just want to want to notate these items are move, have moved to green, or this item has moved to this, uh, everything else is is has stayed the same, that it might be a a two-minute item on a on a board meeting, and I would say, why not then just add it in and do it each each meeting? But if it's your sense that, uh, no, Adrian, you're crazy, i- it is actually going to, we're going to need to do more of this. Then I would say, let's save it for a study session, but I suspect that this work that we've done may make it a lot easier to just receive updates in uh monthly in in our in our meetings.
Board member Benavides, last thoughts?
I think for me, I would like to see, um, I don't, I don't need to see a a the need for a study session, because we've done so much work here already. But maybe an update of every other month, and just kind of see if we have to pivot kind of what um board member Ramos has stated. That's what I would like to see.
I I'm going to um agree with us having um an update every month, and if there's an update, great, and if there's not, then um, there's not, but I would also like to add that around the times that our properties are going to be sold that we should have a study session, right, giving um, giving the cabinet the chance to say, hey, board, you know what, for the next month or two? Like, you guys need a study session, we have a lot of information, so I would leave it at the discreet of the cabinet. Um, but would require for the board to to have an update every month, what do you guys think? Okay? Okay. Great. Okay, I think we rolled up our sleeves, we put on the bandanas and our little sweat, you know, wristbands, and I I think we we tackled a very um important very important um agenda item that our, the future of this district will will be speaking out for for a while, other than the school closures, and I I I want to thank my colleagues here today and Ms. Rodriguez Pena, our board member, who gracefully typed something up and gave her input as well, because we are you know, up here on the dais, i- i- it's definitely democracy, but it's important that we also voice, right, what we feel and what we see in our schools, and what, one of the things that our board member Greer said, hey, I would love to hear from MOT. I would love to hear from teachers, so I think that's a call to invite for our 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 staff to come and speak to us. What do you think? We would love to know, come to our board meetings, let us know what your thoughts are. Today, we had a group of people come in today, right, we had a group of speakers, they came and spoke, and so I I really appreciate that. Um, and our, we have a teacher here that's that always stays late with us, so thank you for that, thank you. Any more on comments, requests from the board, I see you guys packing up, so um, I am going to move this to to item, the last item, which, oh, four point one, adjure, oh, I'm so sorry, one more thing, yes, board member Benavides.
I was just, I'm going to, I wanted to request that the superintendent, can you just kind of include it in our board packet? The next, yeah, what happened tonight, which projects are moving forward, thank you.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate that, now, we moving forward, four point one, can I please get a motion to move four point one?
Motion to move four point one.
We have first motion by board member Rodrigo Ramos.
Second.
I have a second by board member Greer, any more discussion? No, with that being said, um, would you guys like to vote by hand or vote by?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have board member Greer, NII, we have four, yes, and one absent, and it is nine twenty-seven and our school board meeting for today has been closed, have a great night, guys, we'll see you next time.